All right, it's seven o'clock and I would like to call up the order for the co-hosted school committee meeting of Wednesday, March twentieth. As a reminder, all school committee meetings are televised and recorded. Could we have a call to, could we have a roll call, please?
President Paul Currie.
President Barbara Steffen.
President Gina Stino.
President Ellen Mar.
President Jen Mattern.
Thank you. We'll now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So the next item on the agenda is public work. Does anyone have anything that they want to say that's not on, on a subject that's not on the agenda? Then next is the approval of the warrant. Do I have a motion to approve warrant nineteen dash sixteen S?
So moved.
Then do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Aye, Paul Currie.
Aye, Barbara Steffen.
Aye, Gina Stino.
Aye, abstain, Ellen Mar.
Aye, Jen Mattern.
Thank you. Okay, so next is the superintendent's report.
Who do you need? It's a show on this year, this year, feels like a year, this week. We have a Candy Lake Park trip update. Dr. Tobe is here, so if you want to schedule. Some rundown on the participants I have this year, do you want me to read that?
You can do it right away when you're.
No, please, Lucy.
Okay, I don't really know the protocol.
That's fine.
Pretty flexible.
Students taking introductory physics as you research.
A fireside chat.
Yeah, she's, she's sitting in front, you have to too, Mr. Searson.
Mr. Russell, there are students taking our introductory physics in ninth grade, approximately a hundred students, and the number of chaperones is six, so there's Mary Beth Reardon, Sears, Dr. Tobe, and someone else to be announced, do you know what that is?
Well, that, that depends on how administration feels about teachers going. We'll just make sure that we have the right number based on what Candy Lake recommends.
And it says also plus any parent volunteers who've had a chore check, who want to help.
Yeah, 'cause they like a ten to one ratio.
Okay.
So we would need ten chaperones altogether.
Three or four parents, is that right?
That's what we've done in the past.
It's Thursday, June sixth, and it is from seven thirty AM until the bus gets back, hopefully at three thirty. It's in Salem, New Hampshire, the number of buses is three, the cost per student is thirty-eight dollars, group ticket's a twenty-eight plus ten dollars a person for the bus. It's four hours driving time, four hours parked for the bus, and then I think here the criteria apply for speed for the bus. So we need an approval for June sixth from seven thirty to three thirty for students going out of state to Salem, New Hampshire.
Okay, I have some questions, but Ellen.
Oh, yep, so do I. So this is a trip you do every year, and last year I was, I was looking at the application and you had some worksheets on, on what the kids were gonna do, are you gonna do something for things on the bus, things for the roller coaster, things for a bunch of other things that I couldn't remember, but exercises in physics.
Right, yeah, that, that's kind of the point.
Yeah.
So what happened is Russ and I are here because Mary Beth Reardon is the one who has stimulated this trip, this will be the third year that we'd be going in a row, and Mary Beth's on maternity leave, but she's coming back next month, and so she asked me to make sure that I kept the ball rolling.
Yeah.
You know, in the state. So, so the state frameworks and curricular standards for science are very dense and quite rigorous, and so the MCAS test, if you notice, for example, next week will be the English MCAS in March, and the math MCAS is in May, but the science MCAs are already always in June.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's so many standards that the teachers have to get to and the kids have to take. And we've always had a physics first model here for at least twenty years, so we take the, we could take physics, biology, or chemistry, we take physics in ninth grade, so that means that we have the entire ninth grade sequestered in this one class, second semester of their, of their ninth grade, and we noticed that the ninth grade, this is what Mary Beth noticed three years ago, didn't seem to have a lot of field trips, like there were some in the middle school, the eleventh grade, they all have to take American history, US history, so they often go to Locks, Concord, and Lexington, that type of thing. So the ninth grade was just like a couple year window where kids weren't getting an opportunity. So then, of course, if you teach physics, you know that amusement parks are one of the best places to apply the things that you've learned about gravity and weightlessness and mass and momentum and.
Being upside down.
And so Candy Lake is just, it's, it's not Six Flags, it's small, it's much, you can control the kids, they have a great, like nurse station and safety station and, and support staff there, it's, it's not as difficult to, to know where the kids are and keep an eye on them, in addition to providing a curriculum that's just fun. So we intend to use the same curricular resources that we've used in the past and also whatever Candy Lake has up to this year that we can access and see what they're.
I couldn't answer a single question on the worksheet.
I bet you couldn't. We have more confidence than you.
Anybody else have any comments?
So it's kind of a, it's kind of a culminating experience. There's a two-day MCAS in, on June fourth and fifth, and in a way that's like their final exam, that's two days of that, and so it, it's, it's just nice to have some way for the kids to celebrate all their hard work.
I think it's great. I actually was, my line of questioning was similar to Ellen's, where I was going to ask if it was the same, if it, those worksheets last year were pretty intense, I have to say, we were, we were all impressed, so we were happy to see them, so.
Yeah, you can do, you can do it in groups, so then you can rely on the more, on stronger kids to help you through.
Okay, all right, I'll sign up, okay, I'll sign up.
The scariest thing is the traffic.
Well, the first year we did it, we actually shot to get back by two o'clock, and it really wasn't enough time there, and so then last year we, we did the three thirty thing, and it was much more relaxed, and it, it gave the kids, you know, enough time to, to really meet their goals, 'cause there's, kind of for lack of a better term, a scavenger hunt of places they have to go to get the data that they need to fill out their worksheets.
That's, that's so, so much fun.
I actually have a question.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have a question for Michael, the three buses, are they gonna be contract buses or our buses and?
We've used our buses.
So, yeah, the whole is to use our buses, it just depends.
Use, okay.
I use numbers based on what Lucy gave me.
Yeah, yeah, I was just trying.
Okay.
Well, you answered my question. Um, the other thing, will we have our new buses by then? Uh, I don't think they'll be on the road, so the new buses are coming in April, uh.
Yes, it's June.
So.
Yeah, so this is June.
But they will. Yeah, so. Some new buses.
Oh, yeah, I see.
Yeah.
There are a lot of buses.
Yeah, with cameras, no seatbelts, with cameras. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, the ones now have cameras too, oh.
Okay, terrible, these ones will have cameras, they're two sixty's.
Do you have a question, Dr.?
What?
Doctor, sorry.
No, I was just saying, this is the third year, so I'm pretty familiar with the, the routine and the, it was nice to see the worksheets in the past, but I didn't need them this year.
Yeah, mhm, right. Oh, I think it's 'cause Mary Beth isn't here.
Yeah, and that's totally, that's what I figured.
Yeah, no, that's funny. You saw the last trip.
It's a good year to not have, though, most of us have seen it.
Yeah, I, I, I suppose if we were, if we were going to Six Flags or something like that, I don't know that we'd even have to get permission, but it's because we're going out of state, state, you know, so, um.
So anyway, yeah.
Right, right, yeah.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Thank you, thank you so much. I'm not saying I don't need permission, I was just thinking maybe it's, maybe in the future we wouldn't have to, have to do it if it became a thing that was, was really successful, which so far it hasn't been, you know.
No, no, no. Okay.
Anyone else, Jen?
No, I'm upset, I, I think it sounds like a great trip.
No? Oh, thanks. Okay, so then could I have a motion to approve the Candy Lake Park trip on June sixth, two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
We'll give you your chaperones, please, Charles.
Love to have you.
Great to do the worksheets.
Also, the agenda is professional development update, but as you know, we had a full day of professional development the other day, and it involves SAMR, our digital learning, so we have Sue Skeber here to update us, as well as Patrick Sullivan. Will you sit over there?
No, I'm with, I'm with you on her bandos, she's a project. I know. Well, it's nice to be here, it's been a while since I've been here, so.
It's nice to see you, we have been. This year, you want a regular basis.
This year for professional development for our digital learning, we've really looked at two significant areas, both which are within our tech plan, those being digital citizenship and the SAMR model, and I'll kind of give you a feel for what each of those are and what we did as we went through our days with that. Digital citizenship is something that, when I first started looking at technology and using it in classrooms, it really wasn't even on the horizon, it wasn't even in anyone's thinking process, but as the years have gone by and we're using it more and students are using it more and you're using it more, it has become a topic that is significantly important for us as educators and then also for our students to have a good handle on what is it and what should we be doing with it and what should we be conscious of as we go through. And it, and it's, in the past, for a period of time, it was also very much the scary part of technology, all the things we shouldn't do and be worried about. Now, when we look at digital citizenship, we look at it from a, from that point of view, obviously, those things are still things we need to talk about, but also from how do, can we use it critically and how can we use it for learning and extending our thinking and so forth. So this year, we looked at these topics, and if you look at these different models, as with everything, this, we've used the common sense media topics and, and list of areas, which are these eight, where we look at internet safety, digital footprint and reputation, privacy and security, self-image and identity, relationships and communication, information literacy, cyberbullying and digital drama, as well as creative credit and copyright. Some of them sound like they're sort of like the same thing, just worded in a different way, but they have all little nuances to them, looking at how do kids keep their, you know, and helping them to understand that when they put something online, it's there, and it stays there for a good, good length of time, it is their digital footprint, so to be cautious about what that is, to look at how do we communicate with each other online? Is the person that is here sitting in front of you today the same person you'd meet online, you know, do I, do I portray myself in much the same way, or do I think, well, nobody knows me, so I can do whatever I want, and to help kids understand that that's, that's not what we're, what they should be doing. Also looking at how do they search for information, how do they validate, you know, everything that is up there is not accurate or is not true, and how do they go about those, that process of validating and, and authenticating sources that they're looking at? And then, of course, the whole thing of copyright and, and being sure that when they put things down on a report or something that they know, that they have to copyright that and they have to give credit to the writer or the, the person who created it, and having them look at themselves as that person, you know, they have their own intellectual property and that they, they own their own writing and, and what that means. So we were looking at all of these aspects of digital citizenship with our, with our teachers, and the first thing we did, and when I say we, I'm talking about the Digital Learning Committee, which is a wonderful group, we have about sixteen people who are from the, from Osgood all the way through to here at the middle school, high school. We surveyed last spring all of our staff and we asked them, what was their knowledge of each of those areas, how often did they use that in their classrooms, classrooms, and with what frequency were they using it? And we used that information to help us see where were we as we wanted to go forward and, and work with teachers in their classrooms. And this came to bring about a whole other way of looking at digital citizenship. Prior to probably three years ago, four years ago, you might have said, well, all those things could be handled in a computer class, or they could be handled in the library, and kids would all get it just by those two avenues. We now are saying, as you'll hear with a lot of other things we're doing in education, is saying that it's integrating all of these ideas into authentic situations, into real issues that they're meeting in the classroom, so that they need to be part of content areas and not simply things that we shove off to a computer lab or we shove off to the library. And so we met with, I met with every one of the faculties over the course of a couple of professional development days and looked at this whole idea of, let's see how we can put them into our content areas, and helping teachers also to realize, we're not talking about adding a new curriculum to you. We're not talking about you having to come up with ways to do another forty-five minute lesson or fifty minute lesson on all of those different eight areas, but how can we give you resources, videos, little activities, or ways in which you could bring it into your English class, your math class, a social studies class at the elementary level, how could they bring it into their ELA and so forth, so that they can kind of squeeze, not squeeze it, but make it part of what the kids are doing.
I just did this last night with my daughter in third grade.
Very exciting. And then asked the teachers, as they looked at all of the resources that they were given, to then create a plan. So how are you going to go about trying to do some of this in your classrooms? Asked them to look at what's a curriculum area you're working on, what's a, a digital citizenship area you want to focus on, and what might be some of the resources that you, we've given you, that you might be able to use. In a follow-up with teachers, we asked them to tell us, you know, does anybody like to share what they're doing, and one of our teachers here at the high school, so I don't know if I'm doing exactly the right thing or not, but I, I was gonna be teaching about looking at resources and trying to do some research, and so I just talked about what, I used a little video clip from one of the resources you gave me, and very quickly was able to talk with him about, you're gonna be doing resources, research, and here's things you need to think about, and he said it just blended in beautifully. And that's what we're looking for, that's what we're looking to create, is to have kids be able to see it as part of their everyday learning, and for teachers to see that it, it doesn't have to be some big huge thing, but just easy ways to, to look at it, and then looking at the plans that the teachers have done and, and given to me, they really have got the idea and they found ways that they can easily put all of those eight in different, in different subject areas or in different ways into their classrooms. So moving forward, it's obviously to keep looking at that, keep talking about it. One of the things the Digital Learning Committee talks a lot about is how do we continue to share with each other what we're doing, doing that at faculty meetings, at department meetings, grade level meetings, ways in which we can, can help each other know what are, where, where are ways that we can incorporate these kind of things into our, into our learning.
Sue, I think that in, in all faculty meetings now, they have a little section for digital learning, so they can talk about trends that are happening, research that's out there, so it's been a productive addition.
Yeah, it has been. The second thing we moved into, and, and that was what was Friday, our big Friday day, was this thing called the SAMR model, and really, the SAMR model is kind of in a nutshell, it's a way to integrate technology to, so that we can attain higher levels of thinking and understanding. It's taking us up to those, in education, we have this Blooms taxonomy that takes us up to higher, where we are synthesizing and creating and analyzing when we're up at higher levels of thinking. And one of the challenges as technology has come in is how, where does this fit, and how does this work into this whole idea of getting kids up into higher levels of thinking? So the SAMR model was developed by a gentleman, Ruben Puntadura, who was a graduate student at Harvard when he started to look at this to say, is there a way that I can help educators see how the pedagogy they, you know, the teaching strategies they have and the curriculum they have and how the technology they have can all be blended together and worked together to help us get to those higher levels of thinking? So the SAMR model he developed has four levels to it, and even though it looks like a ladder, we don't want to think of it as a ladder, because sometimes we may be at, at the substitution level, sometimes we may be at redefinition, the gentleman who was here, Greg Kulovich, who was with EdTech Teacher, he liked to talk about it as a swimming pool. And he said that, you know, sometimes you're in the low end, and that's perfectly good, that's perfectly acceptable, and sometimes you may be doing a double flip off the diving board in the deep end. The different levels and the red line there, as I was talking with the staff on Friday as well, was that the lower part, you could do without technology. Makes it nice to have it, but you could do it without. Substitution is where you're simply taking this, and I can use it as a word processor, I could also take a piece of paper and write with a pencil. The augmentation is where I'm now taking that same word processing, processing piece, and I'm adding things to it that help to make it a little more functional. I might add speech to text, I might add a picture, I might change the font, the color, all of those little things. Could I do it without a computer? Probably not as easily, but I could. When we move past the red line, we're moving into places where technology is really more essential. In the, in modification, now I'm having kids, or anybody, you folks as well, sharing documents with each other, putting things on a blog and sharing, getting feedback from other people, and so it's not something that I could easily do without my technology. Redefinition takes us even higher up, this is where we might be using multimedia, I might be creating my own video, some of the examples that Greg gave in his keynote was that people, he has had, seen classes where, where students are taking a pretty big question, how can I do something to, to be more involved in the world in which I live and making, developing businesses in which on the computer they're using that to create how they're going to go about their business, what they're going to do with it, and going beyond just the classroom, being able to go outside the school, being able to go more globally. Getting up to those higher levels makes you get to higher levels of thinking, you've got to be able to analyze and synthesize and create, and so that's the kind of thing we were looking at on Friday. We've kind of waltzed around it for the last year, but Friday we actually talked about it as a, here's, here's a model that we could use. And so the Digital Learning Committee again said, well, how are we gonna go about doing this on Friday? How are we going to help teachers to, to get more adept or feel more comfortable with this SAMR model? Again, we surveyed, and we asked them to tell us, what do you know, do you know, where are you in terms of your knowledge of this, are you, I don't know anything, I have kind of a superficial knowledge, I have some knowledge, but I'd really like to know more, or gee, you know, I think I'm pretty, I'm in a pretty good place with this. And what we found is the majority of our people either were between superficial and I have a fair knowledge, so they were kind of in the middle and needed some, some additional support there. We also then asked them, if you're using technology, where would you say you are on the model, you know, are you in substitution, augmentation, modification, or redefinition, and again, no surprises to us, the majority of people were in augmentation with about twenty-three percent moving into modification, again, it was, so, so the timing for us to do this was perfect, because they're, they were ready to kind of move into something more substantial. So this year we were able to bring in two consultants from EdTech Teacher, which is an organization that is right, housed right here in Boston. We had one, Greg Kulovich, who is a senior presenter for EdTech Teacher, he was here with us in two thousand seventeen in the fall, was very well received, and so came back this year, and with him, we had Tom Dackard, who is the founding CEO of EdTech Teacher, and he worked with our elementary people on Friday. So we started out with a keynote, and as you know, with keynotes, I said to Greg, now this has to be inspiring, exciting, it's gonna make me wanna go further, make me wanna do more, I think he choked a little bit, did he, when I said all that Friday?
I'm trying to put it high.
But he didn't disappoint, he was, he did a nice job of bringing us and getting us to think about things, and I think one of the critical pieces that he brought to the table was he talked about the why, and being able to identify why we're doing something, why we're teaching something, and then how are we gonna teach it, and what are we gonna use, and the what becomes the technology. So don't start with the technology, but start with the what, why are we doing this and what are we looking to accomplish? He brought up a, a writer that I have been doing some reading on, Simon Sinek, who has a whole book on why, the whole title is why, and it's just a great way to look at this whole, whole piece, is to not do technology for the sake of doing technology, but do it because it's gonna make a difference in what we're trying to do in our classes. And so we put together a plan, I think Pat shared with you what that plan looked like, in which after the keynote, we had some breakout sessions, and the elementary people went back to their buildings and met with Tom Dackard as our consultant for one of the sessions, and met with Cassie O'Brien as another part of it, and then also were able to have time to work in their grade levels. Here at the middle school and the high school, they met with Greg Kulovich in their departments, and in those, in both of them, they were given an opportunity to look at what are they presently doing, share with these people what they're doing, and get some feedback and other ideas from them so that they could start to look at that in a little bit different way. They also met with me here at the middle school and high school, and they had also had time to work in their departments. So it was a full day, as I went into the last session where Greg was, I had a couple of teachers who said, I am exhausted, and but, and I said, was a good exhausted, right? And, and what they said was, yeah, it was great, made me think, made me work, made, I had wonderful conversations with my, with my department, really felt like we got something out of the day.
I, I was with Tom, the founder of EdTech, the whole day, and he was amazing. One of the things he did with the faculty at Osgood and Deer Hill is he asked them to just, and not even away from technology for a second, think about what awesome feels like, what awesome sounds like, what awesome looks like for our kids, and what came from that was a really dynamic display of awesome. People were, it was messy, people were working hard, people were communicating and collaborating, and he stopped them and said, now, this is kind of what you want with your kids, and then the infusion of technology was just awesome, he was great, he was good, he was wonderful, yeah.
He's terrific. And so our outcomes and expectations for that day was to have our teachers gain in their depth of understanding, that they would be able to review some additional resources they might use, that they would find ways to look at what they're doing now and move forward, and to leave with one idea that they might be able to use as they, as they move forward. And one of the things that they were asked to do at the very end was we had a padlet, which is really like a, a board where you can post things, it's, you know, the old fashioned, where people take a sticky and throw it up there, well, this you can do with technology, and they gave a wealth of ideas and a wealth of information as to their, their day, and here's just a few of them. That they felt it was motivational, they loved that we started with the why, that came up frequently, that they, Greg's presentation wasn't what they expected, but it brought the focus back to what we teach and how we, technology can enhance it, which is perfect.
So you're explaining that I'm no longer a fist?
I'm no longer a fist.
I'm no longer a fist. One of the things that Greg did when he started was, he said, I'm, just to get a feel for who you are and what's, if, I wanna know where you are in knowing the SAMR mos, model. If you know absolutely nothing about it, you're a fist, and then if you know a lot about it, you could be at the third or fourth level, and we did have a couple of fists, so we had someone who said, I'm no longer a fist, I'm feeling good about this. You know, that they, I think the, one of them, the one down the bottom, successful tech integration is like adding spice to a dish, and you only add the spices to enhance the overall taste of the meal, otherwise miserable, it's, it's a miserable experience for everyone, but that was kind of a cool way to think about it.
Definitely, it removes teacher.
It was, you know, you, I think you could hear from there that, and, and numerous others that were, that were given, it was a, it was a day that people came back feeling good about, feeling like they had more to know, more knowledge, more ideas, and the big piece was, we were not saying do technology for technology's sake. We were saying do technology because of where and when it. We were saying do technology because of where and when it will make a difference in what you're doing in your classroom. Where and when it will extend kids' thinking, but if there's other things that you're doing that work, please do them. And that was refreshing, I think, to a lot, we, we've said it before, but it doesn't hurt to say it again and again and again.
And Sue also that they could apply this right away to their work.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, so it was. And in final, you know, I think all of this, the Digital Learning Committee and the work that they do is fantastic and the, and the feedback and the ideas that we, we hash around as we plan these things together is fantastic and makes it all happen. And also the, the whole staff here at Cohasset, the, they energize me when I sent them out an email the other day. I said, you energize me when I'm with you and, and excited about seeing you be excited about what we're doing. So it was, it was good, there's more to do, but I think we're on the right track.
I could just thank Sue for her work too. This is a year-long committee that I've been lucky enough to be a part of. And to, to watch this evolve, to produce this was pretty amazing, so good luck to Sue.
Thanks.
Sue and I started together seven years ago.
Yes.
When I asked Sue, as someone I knew and respected, if she and her colleague, whose conversation with me started on the side of the street. So I think we need to bring technology to Cohasset. And we taught a course for teachers. It started with, most of them were vanilla, didn't know much about even accessing sources.
Oh, right, right.
So we've come a very, very long way.
Yes, the highest was Rocky Road Ice Cream, so a lot of them are at Rocky Road.
I don't know if anybody's aware, but Sue was with us through fifteen credit hours from Bridgewater, certifying fifteen teachers, I think.
I think it was, yeah.
And using technology in the classroom. She went from that to be a consultant to be a part-time assistant superintendent at some point. And has a more limited time this year, but I did wanna note that her position is one that we deferred in the budget. Sue is a consultant, something to think about and we need a more full-time position 'cause obviously the work is just beginning. So it's, it's necessary that we keep that forefront. She has been working overtime.
Thank you.
For very little money.
It's obvious, it's, it's good work.
Thank you, thank you.
Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? I just have one, but of anybody else? No? Can we go back to the surveys of the employees?
Sure.
What kind of response did you get? Surveys are kind of hit or miss. I'm just curious if there are a hundred and fifty employees, for example, that were participating.
With the SAMR, I definitely, we, we had a hundred and nineteen.
Oh, that's great.
Response, that's 'cause we do it.
Faculty meetings can't go away.
Yeah. But you know, I think with the SAMR one, I got into a problem, there were snow days because we were gonna do them all during faculty meetings. I'm also someone who, when I put out a survey, I'm kind of relentless about, gee, I don't think everybody's responded, thanks for those who have. Do you think the rest of you, you know, anybody who hasn't, I'd love to have it from you.
So you know, I've been sending out surveys after every professional development and it's been right up around a hundred.
Yeah, so that if they're.
They really are responding thoroughly to it.
There's nothing worse than bad professional development, so you wanna reply to your surveys, you get what you want and you need.
Yeah, you do.
And we're taking all that in for our professional development team too, as we look forward.
No, I love how you guys have been surveying afterwards.
We're getting a lot of surveys.
And the thing I noticed on your handout, which I would think to the teacher, which always made me crazy with PD at the, at the end, it just said, leave the day one way, which you're gonna go back to your class and implement, 'cause.
Yes, and that's where like the Digital Learning Committee comes in, you know, it's made up of teachers and so forth. Who do say that, you know, that's really what, and I remember as a teacher, that's what you wanted was, so is there something I can use tomorrow? Yeah, so.
I did, well, actually, one other question, did, for the teachers, I just felt like, I mean, when you're learning something new like this, it's sort of like you become fluent in this new way of thinking. Did they get a, did, you mentioned some of it, but I just think it's so valuable when teachers get to share their ideas 'cause then, and I mean, I think for the team teaching, that's coming at sixth grade, like, there's gonna be so much of that and then teach, that all the whole level of teaching raises up quickly because of the cross-pollination of ideas.
Right, I think, you know, as of, in terms of Friday, one of the things they loved was having built into that, even the time with our presenters, that they were able to, to work together as groups.
Right.
And discuss things together as to what they were doing and why they were doing it and how they could do differently. And that was one of the big feedback pieces on the padlet. A lot of peoples appreciated the time.
Yeah.
You know, because none of us have time to do some of these kind of things. And so giving them that kind of time. And I think, as Pat said, putting all of this also into our faculty meetings and, and I, you know, giving a little bit of time there where teachers can have that opportunity to share with each other.
The elementary work, the two specific applications, Seesaw and Book Creator, which they had had some prep for, before the meeting, before the PD.
Right.
And it's great, so then you can tell they were gonna use that right away. And that those have many, many uses and possibilities to bring higher order thinking up, so that was cool too.
And I think in terms of the presenters that we had, they were very interested in what did we want? What did we want to accomplish? They were, I gave them all of our survey data. I gave them all of the things that we had done, I talked on the phone and emailed and, to make sure that, there is nothing worse than a bad PD day. And there's nothing worse than coming out feeling like these, these people don't even know who we are. They don't know what we're about. The, I think the two people we had Friday really did a nice job of, of meeting what we had hoped to accomplish, so let's do it.
Good day.
Great, very good.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Sullivan, does anyone want to add about PD?
I don't have a ton more to add about PD. That was, I wanted to kind of review our focus for the last few PD days. We also showed the film ANX, which really is a film about raising awareness for anxiety to our middle and high school staff. And that, of course, is gonna be shown with collaboration of the Safe Schools and Safe Harbors on the twenty-sixth of the community. So very excited, we've been advertising that. We have an expert panel that will, that involves counselors here and then some pretty renowned counselors from local communities will be working to answer questions. And it should be a great night, so we're very excited to hold down the twenty-sixth.
So that's the twenty-sixth and it's at six forty-five, right?
Forty, yeah. I already signed up, got my ticket.
Yeah, it's filling up. Yeah, people should get tickets quickly because we're, we're almost at ANX, so that's good.
Safe Harbor asked me to share the flyer.
No, no.
Press release also went out and a blackboard connect went out tonight, that's right.
Thank you.
How do they decide fifty-six minutes, like for a week?
That's what it is.
Like fifty-six minutes, like, why not fifty-five?
So there's another, there's two versions, there's a forty-seven minute version and a fifty-six minute version. We went all out for the fifty-six minute. That's one extra.
Thank you. Finance is next. We have a disposal of surplus materials. It's, again, we have, one year ago, and one of the recommendations from me asked as well as looking at our new learning comments, is we had a number of text novels and so on that were passed the look. Paper and books initially have a shelf life to begin with. But these are books that are very dedicated content or otherwise. And Kathy Seruti, like everything else, we were trying to do, trying to stay as objective as possible, put together guidelines called musty guidelines. So either the book was misleading, dated, obsolete, or factually inaccurate. It was ugly, worn out into and unable to mend, or superseded by a new edition trivial, not discernible with literacy, literally or scientifically merit, was irrelevant to our needs or elsewhere, the material is easily obtainable elsewhere in the library, online, et cetera. So that was her criteria. She noted that there are seven hundred and fourteen books. They are in the attached list, either very dated, worn out. And the fiction is the most modern of the fiction novels is nineteen ninety in the source. So it's either seventies, eighties, or nineties. She's worked very hard and she's used her greatest objectivity and volunteers to eke out all of these non-essential texts.
Well, the first one on the list is The Trouble with Mothers. I took note of that as I flipped through, because believe it or not, I did go through all of this. I couldn't tell you the rest, but that one stuck out.
What was it, nineteen eighty-nine?
Did you have a question, Alice?
Well, just a comment, so this is the third year in a row that we've been authorizing a surplus. Twenty-seventeen was two hundred and twenty-one articles, it was mostly VHS tapes, cassettes and things like that, but some books. Last year was five hundred and eighty, this is seven hundred and fourteen, that's over fifteen hundred. When are we gonna be done?
Hopefully this is one of the last major purges. Many of these were identified when we constructed the learning congress. So I don't, I don't think they'll ever be completely finished. There will always be a weeding that should take place annually. I would like to think that it's not just going to be this heavy.
Yeah, this is huge.
And then how, how does the library get replenished, what's the funding source? We have a funding source. The budget has allowed a little bit more than when I first arrived in Cohasset. The librarian at that point was giving two hundred dollars a year. This year, I think in the budget, we have six thousand. Some of them are gifts, some are purchased through our budget or grants. Some of our libraries do give grants, I know more of Osgood with grants on particular topics. I can't speak to the exact funding in the new place, so much of it is going online as well. She seems to buy well. And does the lost book fund, can that contribute to the library as opposed to text?
Text, text.
Text only.
You're right, okay.
So the budget's only two hundred dollars for the year?
No, it was initially about, like, ten years ago.
Ten years ago it was.
It's quadrupled and then some right now.
Okay, and it's, again, if somebody wants to.
It's about six thousand, right?
So if, yeah, so if anybody wants to donate, they can just write a check to Cohasset.
Yeah, it would be a gift accepted by the school.
Yeah, just write it to Cohasset.
Or it'd be a gift.
You could always use books. I'll just give you all my daughter's.
Just make sure they're not published in nineteen eighty-nine.
Oh, yeah, they're brand new, everyone, which is a good thing, so this falls right through.
Where do they go?
So they do try and, so there are organizations that will come and buy books, but they, Kathy said that even those, when they see the age and condition of these books, are not interested. So the first thing they have to do, actually, they have to remove all identifying marks, sort of a Scottish code.
Oh, okay.
They have to, they have to help, more work. And they, they then try and find any charities that anyone can give them. They do give some to the boutique at the transfer station in town, so they, they try.
Well, at least they don't cost us, we don't throw them in the, in the, um.
They give them to shelter salts and some children's.
We try, we try and, yeah.
Right, 'cause we like waste management, we love that. So we just bring them and we bring them right to the dump, okay, that's good.
Great. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve disposal of the surplus materials outlined in this document from Mrs. Seruti?
So.
Second.
Is that Ellen Paul?
Yeah, Ellen Paul. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Great.
All right, so, yes. So the financial reports, so we've got the usual collection of financial reports, I've spoken of them in order. So the one on the top is the revolving, in grants summary. Uh, there's, we actually received, so, a, for the big federal grants, so for Title I and Title II and, and the IDA grant, they do a reallocation around this time of the year, this year. So we've got, I think in total about three thousand eight hundred dollars and that's spread out through, so I'm a bit too excited about. But that, a, while those, while that was ongoing, we were submitting, the, a, the request for funds was frozen, which is why we haven't, a, requested any funds yet for Title II, any for the two V, which is why you see that deficit, but that request is now going to be, so that should be fixed by the next presentation. And Title IV, we've just started spending that now, this is why you see the deficit here. But everything else is ongoing. And the revolving accounts, uh, we have, let's see, the things I was gonna highlight were, was it athletics? The, so it's interesting, our revenue is actually a little down from this point in last year. So the spring registration's just happening right now, so in the next report we'll have a better idea of whether that's just timing or whether there's something else going on, maybe Steve's go through that. However, expenditure is also down, so the balance at this point last year was like thirty-five thousand, so.
Cool.
No.
Hundred and forty-five.
The balance.
In athletics?
At this point last year.
Feb, yeah, February end, one forty-five five.
Uh.
I didn't bring my balance, let me just card it out.
Need to check, I ran the report, this is just after noon.
It's the one I didn't read yet. Okay, I'll go check today, but.
So, yeah, me too, so, because it made, it added up because expenditure was down. I did have, expenditure was a hundred and forty-five thousand last year at this point, so I'm at that. Okay, all right, so with expenditure being up, was either this year expenditure down, so revenue was down. Still a little bit of money left, it's all in the funding. Uh, kindergarten is a little higher than it was at this point last year. It only two hundred, it's back to a hundred, it's at this point last year. Uh, the, there is a deficit in the preschool revolving account, so that we just have to correct. So we split the, some of the preschool features there, salary comes out of both the operating budget and the revolving fund, and just slightly too much come out of the revolving fund, so we'll correct that. And, yeah, and then transportation is, uh, going to a position right now, the most active, the driver salary is at that. So that was all the revolving accounts, any questions?
I have a, I have a question. I know last month, because there's three accounts for gifts.
Yeah.
So there's the school committee gifts, three ninety-one. And then you've added the PSO and CEF, three oh three and three oh four. What is the non-PSO and CEF school committee gifts?
So it's not law, it's just like anything else you get. I mean, so there's generally not Osgood in there, but if there's any smaller donations, if anybody sends a check in, it's not one of those.
Safe Harbors, uh, checks, CCRs and checks.
The mobile station station.
Yeah, well, it's a, it's a good balance.
But it is.
So there's a historic, there's a history there, so in that balance, it's actually some of the historic CEF and PSO money.
Oh, the, the, yeah.
So this is just, so we've just kind of done it going forward because it's kind of difficult to unpick all that, so, a, some of that money is a story. Including.
It's actually cleaning up where it's coming from.
Yeah, well, so, yeah, so it's just much easier to track, but it's separated out of the PES numbers. So then, so then moving on to the general funds. So, I mean broadly, uncomfortably we are at the moment. We have a couple of areas where we're running under budget, which is in contracted services, and that includes that medical therapeutic line, which is for behaviorists, specialists that work with students and are driven by the high needs. Uh, but we are, we are actually, but that is offset by a couple of lines where we are running under budget, including in other, which is lower and that's partly because our employment payments this year have been a little, look at how much budget is. Also salaries are also running a little below budget. Um, what else, utilities as well, that's driven by that electricity saving that we're saving, which is great. Those are the highlights. Yeah, any questions on that?
Yes, so I, I just looked at Michael, like la- last year.
Yeah.
And our encumbered amount is much greater.
This year?
This year than last year, as, as we've been doing all, all year long.
Yeah.
So if, if you, if you take out the differential, last year we had eighty-seven thousand encumbered and against six fifty-six.
Yeah.
We're only two points over last year in the total expenditure, so.
Yeah.
It, at first I was like, wow, we're, we're five points over.
Oh, yeah, I know, so every time I look at it, I have a heart attack.
Yeah, yeah, I was having a heart attack, yeah.
And also the T, not the encumbered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it, it's, it's not, it's not that, um, you know, and, and, you know, a good part of salaries are right on point.
Yeah, exactly. They're so close, it's amazing, the classroom teachers, I have a graph of this year's versus last year's, they're practically the same way.
The only thing, so on, on athletics.
Yeah.
Based on the comment on the revolving.
Yeah.
So I would, I looked at the budget, well, I looked, so we, so here we have expenditures in athletics at sixty-nine percent. Last year was ninety-three because the strategy was to spend all the. Last year was ninety-three because the strategy was to spend all the operational first before we pulled her revolving, and now it seems to be a little bit, we're pulling a little bit from both.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But we're pulling a little bit from both at a little higher rate.
Sweet, yeah.
So, um, there's like two hundred thousand left in the total budget.
Yes.
In athletics, about sixty-seven percent spent.
So.
Which I guess is about right considering we have the third season left, yeah.
Yeah, coming up. I mean, I definitely want to check the numbers, so I'm, I'm sure when I ran this report, um, earlier today, that we're, we're below, we're, we've spent less this year than we had at the same time last year. So I will check, I'll look into that, I will check.
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll check my math, too.
Yeah. So, yeah, so.
I'm not using technology to do my math.
Silence, please.
I'm doing it all that.
With paper.
With your supercomputer.
Paper and pen and all. N- mental math.
We'll definitely have a better, I guess, yes, and once we've seen the revenue from, yeah.
So we'll, we'll take, I was looking at those graphs, this is interesting, yeah, look, hold on.
I have my graphs.
The lower end is fine.
And so, eh, so I am, so why, I'm looking forward to see how much is coming from the spring registrations, because that'll be critical.
Did, did Steve have any idea, because he ju-, well, he just had signups mon- Monday night, Monday?
Yeah, I've not, he's been, he's been.
He's still straight up, he's still, yeah, okay.
He's been, yeah. So I meet with him on Monday.
Okay.
And then, eh, on the, the transportation, well, my big announcement, I was gonna be, the buses are getting delivered in April, but it's still my current work, so. I don't know, the buses have been delivered in April. So, eh, I mean, that's where we should be receiving, the, receiving them, and then it takes a little time to get on the road, to get all the inspections done.
Stickers.
A road, when I, uh, sold that piece of stuff.
Yeah, lettered.
So we're working a little bit more on that. I mean, otherwise, we're trying not to do any work on these buses, although we might still have to, because we do have the fortunately, the timing, we have inspections in April. So it looks like we're gonna have to get some of those inspections, and then get the buses, like, on the road, few days later.
Oh.
So that's really all there is to say.
Well, this is a lesson for next time.
Right.
Yeah, we need to start.
Well, so we have, so we've changed his contract, so it runs up in the summer going forward, so we're just gonna have to probably go forward.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, good, good, 'cause we need to, we need to make sure that we're paying attention to this, have you, the tires and brakes pill us.
Right.
Well, at least the new people, the buses, we can.
Yeah, nice new bus, cut out, yeah. Swap them back.
So, good, it all comes back.
And we have, we have one bus to dispose of.
Yes, we do, uh.
Yeah, it's disposable.
Eh.
Yeah, we, oh, yeah, that's fair, yeah.
For water.
The, yeah, once we get new, yes, yes.
Oh, yeah, the camper.
Once, once we get new plates, yeah, okay.
And then, so that, that's the financial reports. And then, so the last item I have was the Water First International application.
Fast food, fast maintenance.
That's not, that's, fast maintenance, that, yeah, that's, that was, yeah.
That was, yeah.
So I have been, eh, communicating back and forth with Water First International just to make sure they are all on board. The, eh, all on board with the requirements of using the field. They have, they are paying, so they have, they have accepted, so we sent them a list of fees they'll have to pay, including the fee to cover custodian in order to access bathrooms. They have, they have, they have arranged for volunteers to, to clean up afterwards during and after the event. But they have, I've also informed them of the cost of an additional dumpster pickup, so essentially just get extra dumpster pickup, just, just, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars. And also, I've informed them, when they've agreed, that if there's any cleanup that we have to do, they are charged hourly custodian cost. And in addition, so, it's not technically, so the, the town has an event permitting process. So any events like road races, anything that's gonna impact them, they have to go through the town permitting process. So although, eh, they're normally events which are under the auspices of the school and are gonna largely take place all within the school grounds, are not gonna have to go through that process, but given the size and nature of this, I've been working with the town and having them go through, kind of the, not necessarily pay for permit, but go through some of the process and filling in all of the information they need, shooting, and then I'm, we're setting up meetings through Jennifer Oram at the town hall to make sure our, the teams have dotted a line across the teams and everybody's aware, all of the various, the town departments are aware of, so.
And they're gonna go to police detail.
And they're gonna, yeah, they have to, and you're aware of that.
Yeah.
They have to.
Yeah. Any other questions, Jen?
So on the application, it still is circled, no, that they don't need a custodian?
So that's, so, so the, so the, the application and that is something we're working on, is updating the application. So unfortunately, the way the application works at the moment is the applicant decides, indicates whether they need a custodian. But really, that's our decision, so in future, that's gonna not be an option, and they won't be able to circle. So we always get people certainly, no, but we can go back and say, no, you have, you, you might not want one, but you have to have one, because we need to.
Yeah.
And their guidance says that you need to have that, so they have circled it, but we have come back and said, you need access to the bathrooms. So if there's any additional cleanup, then you have to pay for custodian, and this is our rates.
So will you just have like an amendment to the application, so it's on file?
Sure, yeah.
And like.
Well, so we have all these, like, tons of documentation from it, not in the, I could read recently.
Okay, yeah, 'cause this, this is the same as we got before, but it's not.
Yeah, so the last couple of weeks, and they filled in the state, the town permitting application as well, and I will go and help get attached to the.
Okay, it took me a while, I was staring at this, I was like, what's different?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, yeah. So we, alright, yeah, yeah.
What am I missing?
No, actually, I asked Michael about the questions the other night, just to make sure that we were on target, because it was on the agenda. And he did have a series of back and forth emails, and he gave me, um, the last one that had some of her answers, so.
Okay.
Um, are we ready to move forward pending corrected application and all of our criteria being met? Or do we want to wait one more meeting?
No, I, I think, I think we can go, um, I think it's got it under control, and I just think for the, for the record, for the file.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should be right.
So I, and I do envisage coming back to you within, well, eh, taking updates on this post procedure and possibly even to update the policy at some point.
Yeah, yeah.
Because Amy, eh, Amy in my office, who's now responsible for this, she's implemented a much tighter process. So it's much clearer the lines for, eh, requesting, and then we've been working with Ted Carroll at town, and, eh, 'cause he's upgrading his policy as well. And we'll see an option for him, we can improve it and just make all of it cleaner and less subjective and much more subjective. It's just here's the boxes you have to check, so that's our plan.
Okay, all right, so do I have a motion to approve the Water First International event on Sunday, June ninth, two thousand nineteen, from ten to three P M? Pending, um, an updated usage application that addresses our concerns.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
I have a poll.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can we take a two-minute break to stretch more?
Yes.
I'm just gonna make a bad joke, it's the use of facilities.
I'm gonna definitely share.
Madam Chair, I would like to be excused for the interview process, sir would like you to be full candid in disclosure. Great, thank you very much.
Come in, yes.
Okay, are you ready? Okay, so we are now at the point in the agenda where we have a special agenda item, um, which is, um, conversation and interview with a candidate for superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan, so if you could take the hot seat, please.
Sure.
And the water.
I have extra drinks if you need.
Somehow I can't see myself reaching across the room.
It's, it's a variety pack.
But you never know.
So, um, at this point in the process, the school committee, um, this is a school committee conversation, as everybody in the audience, I'm sure, understands, and not open for discussion or comments from the others. Um, I have to say that students, staff, parents and community members have been very busy over the past few weeks, um, meeting with our consultants and filling out, um, surveys to participate in this process. And we have had, we've all had an opportunity to weigh in, and we appreciate everyone's input on this journey. So with that, we'll begin. Do you wanna pass the first?
No, Patrick, Patrick was.
Patrick was.
Oh, right.
Yes, um, jumped it down.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Couple of comments for us.
Yeah, excellent. Yep. Um, well, first of all, thank you, I wanna thank the, um, Collins Group, Dr. Sherlock, Dr. Goggar, I wanna thank the co- committee, and really the whole Cohasset community, including the superintendent team, is for the support I've, I've felt since I've been here and for giving me this opportunity, um, to talk about what I can bring to Cohasset and how Cohasset, I feel is, is a match for me. Um, and I thought it started out by just sharing, you have my background, you have all of that, so I thought I'd just take a few minutes to share, uh, my core values, some of my core values, and how I think they'll be a, a nice fit for Cohasset. And, um, and I'm excited to, to really help put them into action. I guess at my, at, at my foundation, I try to make all of my decisions about students. So students are at the center of all my decisions, so my first core value is that I, I always try to remain student-centered, and I think that's an important factor for every member of the school community to, to consider. Uh, there are three sayings that are sort of my mantras as, um, as a leader. And if I had known these sayings when I began my teaching career, they would've, I would've tried to emulate them. The three are from the skillful teacher course I took, Saphir and Gower, and it's that this is important, you can do it, and I will not give up on you. And I feel like everyone that is involved with Cohasset Public Schools should emulate those three, three sayings, whether it's students helping other students, um, or striving for, for academic and social emotional success, whether it's, um, families working with, with other families or working with administration. Those three messages, I think, are key and primary to our, um, to, to our growth. And for me, culture sets the way for everything, you know, it's always culture first. And I think if you have a great culture in a classroom, you're gonna have great, uh, academic learning and social emotional learning. If you have a great culture in a school, you're gonna have a school that's cohesive and comprehensive, and the same thing is true for a district. And one of the things that I believe firmly in as a leader, and I'm hoping I can bring more of this to Cohasset, is the idea of family. I have a, um, a, a real, uh, solid feeling that it's important to bring that feeling of family to schools, to a district. Now, we're a smaller district, and we really should feel like a family. Families go through things, you know, sometimes there are problems, sometimes, uh, things are working just swimmingly. But that idea of a family and working things out together transparently is really core to me. Um, next, I would say the, the belief in the whole child. And to me, the whole child means, of course, striving for academic excellence, but also remembering that social emotional, uh, aspect of the child. Uh, I, I, I believe that every student should be able to explore self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, relationship skills, uh, build and responsible decision-making as really part of a diet of a whole child and an academic diet. And, you know, I believe firmly in, in driving for cultural competency, uh, cultural proficiency. I think it's important that we learn about each other, respect each other's cultures. And, um, you know, the idea of empathy being central to everything we do. Empathy's very important to me as an individual. When I was an early learner, I struggled, and, um, I also had some loss when I was younger. You know, my, my dad died when I was in middle school. So when I became a teacher, immediately I empathized with that student sitting in the back of the room who was struggling, or the student who had experienced some trauma. And then as I grew as an educator, I started to, to realize that you have to meet students where they are, and every student needs a push. 'Cause sometimes even a student who's getting great grades and is achieving and getting straight A's maybe, may not be fully developed on the social aspect, too. So really meeting students where they are and balancing that, uh, and promoting another core value of mine, which is a growth mindset. The idea that there are times when you will fail and you will miss the mark, and that's okay. If we support a child to realize that the, sometimes the more mistakes you make, they're just growth points to, to get to a bigger and a greater goal. So really encouraging kids to take chances, um, healthy chances, and to, to be able to grow, um, with mistakes is very important to me. And finally, well, my, a couple more things, but communication, communication is huge for me. The idea of being transparent in communication, um, and making sure that, uh, I'm always communicating proactively, whether it's to parents or staff, something that's really core to me. And finally, uh, just being a systems thinker and setting systems in place that are gonna support the students and the teachers and the families. You know, I won't be grading the papers or running a staff meeting unless that principal wants me to. Um, but I will be setting the systems, uh, to build forward in, in a way that, um, helps our students and teachers. And just finally, I just, I've built so many great relationships here in Cohasset. I feel very connected to, to the staff, it's an amazing staff, I, I'm inspired by them every day. Uh, I've grown connected to the families in my work with the, with committees, whether it be the Safe Schools Committee, um, I work on hiring committees or working with Safe Harbors or CSCR. I feel very connected to families and community groups, and then the students. The students are just dependents, and, um, I feel I'll grow with them in this position and always have them center to everything I do. So, very excited to be here and thanks for the opportunity.
Great, so as I had mentioned in the week we talked last night, we each have some questions to ask you, and, um, we're gonna go right down the table.
Alright.
Is that right, so, and we have.
Can I?
What?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna start with Jen.
Yes, and I was just, I was just gonna add that, um, you, you touched on this, but the forums, the feedback we got, um, all informed some of our questions as well. So we have sort of integrated, obviously, each of us kind of has our own bent and interest that you're probably aware of. But we also very much considered, what did, what did people give back to us and what, what are the community concerns that need to be addressed, too? So those are definitely, um, had something, had a lot to do with the questions we'll be asking.
Great, excited for them.
So, I guess I'm first.
Okay. She didn't know, who's the crowd.
I didn't know.
Okay.
Um, the feedback from the forums and the focus groups was really informative and really great. Um, I think across the board, uh, parents, students, uh, faculty. I think across the board, parents, students, faculty, leadership, community members, all cited that Cohasset was a high-achieving district. And I guess I would like to know what your definition of academic achievement is. Has it changed in your educational career? Is it something different today than it was when you first started? And what are academic areas of strength in our students? And what are academic areas that maybe need attention?
Okay, great question. So I think academic growth or academic success, again, it comes back to meeting the students where they are and really pushing students out of their comfort zone. You know, really trying to get them to push as hard as they can to achieve. And know that it's a constant growth cycle. So, you know, as I mentioned, I was a struggling learner, and I had to have that first sense of academic success for me. And I still remember it vividly, and I think it was in sixth grade, getting an award for something academic. And just realizing that that was important to me. And I think a lot of our students will achieve in other things before they really click in academically, whether it be in music, or in arts, or in sports. And having a well-rounded opportunity to realize what it feels like to achieve and constantly pushing yourself to understand that those failures along the way will guide you to academic success. So I think, I really think it comes down to that idea of a growth mindset. Once you are able to create that in your definition of what academic success is, it kind of pushes you to reach as many goals as you can. We have a lot of academic strengths here in the district. You know, clearly, we have some thriving scores. And I was inspired by the fact that our MCAS scores in 10th grade were very solid this year. Our AP scores, I think our AP programming is something that we can be very proud of. I love the fact that it's an open enrollment situation, and we still have very, very high scores. I think that we're taking a really close look at literacy. I've seen some growth in that. I'm very inspired to create some data teams that can look at that growth from a real systematic point of view. Math, our scores have dipped at the elementary level. And I think we all realize that we have to look at that. This year coming, the plan is to do a curriculum review of math, really look at our programming, but also look at our data sources, and create a data dialogue or a data discussion about where we are in math. So, you know, I think there, you know, we have a comprehensive arts program that can continue to build. I'd like to see that build. I love the fact that we're building it at the elementary level at Deer Hill. You know, we have music that's been put into the school day, which I think is a fantastic statement by Principal Sullivan. And that's already causing effects as we build capacity to handle those students when they hit, or, you know, support those students when they hit the middle and high school. So those are just a few of the areas that I can see us, you know, moving and growing in.
Can I ask Paul?
Yep, you have till eight twenty.
Can I ask my next, do I ask my next question?
Yeah, yeah.
My next question is, in reading the comments from the focus groups and the forums, there's excitement and maybe a little bit of apprehension about the splitting of the schools and having a middle school and a high school. I think you've really shown that you're a person that can build consensus, and you've done a, you can create a shared vision. But sometimes when you're leading those kinds of discussions, we never get to really know what you think. So if you had a magic wand and you could picture the most awesome middle school, and I'm picking middle school because you've done a lot of work in that, what would the school look like and feel like?
Well, I mean, I mentioned I was a middle school principal, as you know, but I also taught at the high school level too, so I have feelings for both. I think any level that you're leading in or teaching in, it needs to be specific for that age. And middle school, since you mentioned middle school, is a very unique age. And we need to make sure that we meet kids at that age, and it's not just a transition into high school. It starts with culture, particularly in middle school, where students have to have a feeling that they can explore academic, their academic goals. They can explore themselves as social beings. And because the growth in middle school academic is, and social is about a par, if not more socially at times. So I would want a school that was warm, that stressed empathy, and that really strived to be a comprehensive experience for a student as he or she moved through middle school to high school. But to really look at them as a middle school student. So I'm very much excited and inspired by the work that's going on. And I think the middle school educators have been courageous. They're in a period right now where they're looking at scheduling, and they're talking about what's best, and there's going to be some strife in that. But I really appreciate the fact that they're persevering through it. And growth isn't, as you know, isn't like this. Growth feels like this sometimes. But I have complete faith in their vision, and I've added to it. And it's also nice that the middle school vision has been supported by a lot of research and a lot of voice. We've had a lot of voice. And the key is to keep moving in the direction of what's best for kids, but to do it without putting blinders on, so that we can continue to have those deep discussions that have to be always centered about students. So that's kind of what happens in a middle school. It leads with culture and it applies to a lot of things.
Okay, I only have a couple minutes.
She's got three minutes.
Creating an inclusive environment is critically important for all students. This year, the town diversity committee and the diversity club have started some important conversations in our school community around the topic of diversity and creating a culture of acceptance. How will you support their efforts? And what does our district need to do to create a more inclusive school community?
Well, I've been very inspired by the work that's happening recently at the, just to give an example, at the high school with Assistant Principal Scott, driving the work with our MECO director, Elise Guinness-Karl, our diversity club. And I love the fact that they brought the Hate U Give to the public schools. And we had a panel that was a very diverse panel that really spoke, and this also came from the Boston students as well, that spoke of the importance of getting to know each other. Really just trying to walk in each other's shoes for a bit and getting to understand where we're all coming from. Keeping that open conversation. So really, letting the schools take some chances and to make those important steps, to get people in a room, have them start an open discussions, giving teachers the license to have open discussions with kids about important topics in a guided way. It's just vital, because unless we talk about it and we support our teachers and our administrators to have those conversations, they're not going to happen. And that can lead to things that we don't want. So I think, I was very inspired by their angle of, you know, we just have to get to know each other better, and we have to work to do that. I think as, from a professional development standpoint, we're moving into cultural proficiency as a major professional development initiative next year, first starting with some training of staff. Some of the staff questions that came up in that particular showing of Hate U Give were fabulous, because they really spoke to teachers trying to deal with cultural differences and maybe not knowing how to do it all the time. And getting that back and forth and the support from the students on how to do it is just, it's going to make us a much better place as a school community. And I'm a huge fan of our MECO program, and I hope to inspire others and work with others to open up the possibilities for our Boston students, because the Boston students here, they add just more to our culture here in many ways than we add to them by coming here.
Thank you, can I ask my last question?
You can have some of my time. I'll yield you a couple.
What characteristics, what are the characteristics of a strong working relationship with the school committee? What would you like to see us do? And more importantly, what would you like to see us not do?
Well, I think a strong relationship with the school committee, I think the superintendent's job is to always keep the school committee informed. I think that would be a huge responsibility for me, is to make sure that you're not on the ground floor in the schools, and I need to make sure that you're informed of what's happening in the schools. Quite frankly, as a district, I think we need to inform more people about the wonderful things that are happening in the schools, because I don't think we're giving enough press to the amazing things that are going on here. But from a school committee point of view, that would be first and foremost for me. I also would want to make sure that I discuss important and the correct data with you, so that when we have discussions, you can see the data that's behind it. You know, I think as a committee, you know, the buck stops with you. You are, you know, you are leaders of our school community, and I would want you to continue to advocate for those passions that put you in this position. And no, I'm going to do the same. And just like every other piece of this culture, it has to start with trust. And as we build trust within the school community, our open conversations and the trust that we have between one another, I think will inspire this community, the school community, to be more trustful of each other. So that's what I hope to build with you. I already have a huge respect for your commitment, for your job, for what you've committed to do. And I'm always speaking my mind, and I really do feel so strongly about the staff here and advocating for them. But I think those conversations will set the tone for everything else that happens in the district. So I think, I look at it as a big responsibility, but I'm really excited for the opportunity to continue the conversation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
In a lot of the feedback we got, the word nice was used to describe you, Patrick Sullivan.
That's nice.
He's a nice guy, he's a nice guy. But the flip side to that is the challenge of how do you handle, Patrick, the difficult conversations that have to happen sometimes with staff, with community members, with us? Like, what's your MO, how would you approach that?
Yeah, I'm nice, no, I'm just kidding. I like to think I'm nice, I've been called a lot, Laura. Well, you know, one of the things I've improved as a leader over time is the ability to really listen. And I feel I'm reflective, I'm passionate. And at times, my passion had been misconstrued sometimes as, I don't know, anger's too strong, but, you know, my passionate approach for what I believe sometimes has in the past been overwhelming to folks. So it's nice to hear that you said I'm nice. But I think I've developed a better sense of really listening to what people are saying. And I like to think I'm very reflective. I know I was a very reflective teacher. And I'm also, I think I have the ability, I like to, hope I do, to tell people when I'm wrong, if I make a mistake. You know, to be able to go to them and say, you know, I reconsidered what I was saying to you, and I think I'm wrong, or I look at it from a different perspective. But I've never been afraid to have those conversations, because again, if I come back to my passion, this is the most, kids are very important to me, and the success of students is very personal for me. So leaning into that conflict to make sure that I have the proper conversations with people to continue that is just, it's so elemental to who I am. So I hope I can do that effectively. I have in my past, so. But I'm always going to be respectful, and I'm always going to, I'm not a yeller. I'm a, you know, I like people to feel that they're feeling heard and that they're respected. So if that's what nice is, then yeah, I'm going to be nice.
Yeah, well said. What do you think, well, in this world we live in today, there's a very short leash for mistakes and failure. So what do you think your biggest failure has been, and what did you learn from it? And how would you manage that in the leadership role you aspire to?
So my biggest failure ever?
In the school environment.
One of the things, and this has some parallels to the position I'm in now. My first leadership position was as department head of an English department. And I had, you know, I taught for 12 years, and then I had the opportunity in the last two, so at year 10, to be an English department head. And I automatically assumed that I had built the relationships with the folks in that department and that they were going to support me, and I was going to lead them, you know, right forward. And I just learned that wasn't true. I know this has shocked everyone. At the time, you know, I think my ideas were good. And it was interesting, when I left that position and moved over to Assistant Principal and Principal at a middle school, to see the ideas I had coming to, you know, to effect. But I wasn't leading them. I had an idea, but to lead them, you really have to do a lot of listening. And you have to meet people where they are, and you have to redefine yourself in every role you're in. So that was a failure of mine. But it was also one of the most important experiences I've ever had in education, because it taught me that you can have all the great ideas in the world, and unless you're able to, you know, work with people, build consensus, lead from the middle at times, get your hands dirty, let them know that, you know, you're listening. You're not going to get there. So that was a moment in my educational career that I look and say, could have done that better, but boy, did I learn from it.
What are the key characteristics you seek when assessing an outstanding teacher or administrator? And what are some of the characteristics you found consistent among the most effective educators you've worked with?
So student-centered, okay, that they can engage the students. Often a sense of humor, you know, that sense of understanding the child and really, just having fun. It's that, I guess the word is joy. You know, you see it in a great educator, that they're just joyful with the kids. And even if they're driving them, and they have a style that people say, oh, that teacher's hard, you can see the glimmer in their eye when they get that student to go further than he or she thought that he or she can go. So it's that, you know, it's that idea of the joy for what you do, and I see it a lot here. One of the things that I was really struck by when I came here is the level of teaching. In many cases, the level of teachers who I would consider very close to master teachers in the district, there are, for the amount of teachers we have, I think there's a good portion of teachers who really get that. And I would say a common characteristic is that they inspire joy in their students. And that joy comes from academic achievement, social achievement, and really pushing themselves beyond what they thought they could do. So that's sort of my answer. And I think the sense of humor kind of, it seems to be a common characteristic of most of those teachers, that in their own way, they can have some fun with the kids.
Okay. And what also came out in the focus groups and in the forums is there's a perception, might not be reality, but there is a perception that there's been an academic decline in Cohasset over the last year, perhaps tied to events, maybe, maybe not. So how would you eradicate that perception?
Well, I don't know that there has been. I mean, I think if we look at scores and we even look at internal scores, I would say that that's probably not completely accurate. We've always been a community that has prided ourselves on our academic achievement. But I'll come back to something I said earlier, that I don't think we're doing a good enough job in the schools. And as superintendent, I would be leading this, in tooting our own horn, really, and talking about what's happening in the schools that is academic excellence. So that's the first answer. And then I think being really transparent about data. One of the things, if you're not giving people data enough, and you're not out there, is that people create their own data. And often, it's inferential data, or it's data that they hear from others. There really isn't accurate. So drowning us in quantifiable, and even, you know, quality data, data that comes from sources that are in the know, will be crucial in setting us back on the path of having the reputation, if we have had any hit to our reputation about academics. I think it will put us back on the track quickly, because I think we're there. I think, I really think there's great teaching and learning happening. We can tighten up some of the structures, look at data, but I do think that we need to let people know some of the great things that are happening. It's a great district.
All right, Dan.
So going back to Jen's earlier question.
So going back to Jen's earlier question about your experience at the middle and high school. Given your extensive experience at the middle middle and high school levels, how will you engage and connect with the elementary schools?
So I've loved working with the elementary schools over the last two years. They're amazing. But I also had the benefit of being on a very cohesive leadership team in my previous district. They had amazing, as we do here too, amazing elementary principals. And we were collaborative. We engaged in learning walks, which is what I'd like to bring here to to Cohasset. And learning walks were a way for, well, because I engaged in them as a leader, I was able to go into the elementary classrooms, to see the kind of learning and teaching that's happening there. To listen to the elementary principals talk about what they saw and what they would like to improve. And also to have them have that experience at the the middle and the high school. So I I learned so much from that experience that I really felt, because I was in such a cohesive leadership team, that I love to bring some of those some of those things here to, you know, to Cohasset. And like I like I said, working on the elementary literacy team, working with elementary teams through professional development, looking at our math curricula, working with our specialists. I've been inspired. I've learned from them. And I think I've been able to add some different perspectives to that. So yeah, I, my growth curve in elementary, it just took off. And I and I love the kids. I mean, if I want a good, really want a good day, I go down to Principal Farrell's school. It's amazing. And they'll ask me all kinds of crazy questions. So I love that too.
Thank you. My next question, there are times when simple intelligence is not enough to resolve a problem. Can you describe a complex problem, situation, or crisis that you confronted where you had to rely on more than intelligence? When you had to call upon your other skills and abilities? For example, communication, quick thinking, delegating and relying on others, political savvy instincts, academic training, or just plain common sense?
So could you repeat just part of that?
I I can repeat the whole thing.
Okay, yeah, 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 okay.
Because I know it's it's very.
I didn't just hear you clear.
It's very complex. There are times when simple intelligence is not enough to resolve a problem.
Okay.
Can you describe a complex problem, situational crisis that you confronted where you had to rely on more than intelligence? When you had to call upon your other skills and abilities? For example, communication, quick thinking, delegating, and relying on others, political savvy instincts, academic training, or just plain common sense? And I would like it to be outside of Cohasset.
Okay. Well, ha-.
Because we all know that there's been, well, not many, tricky situations.
Yeah, yeah.
There always are in schools. So I'm interested in in learning a little bit backstory.
Okay, well, when you're dealing with middle school students, you know, as a middle school principal, there were there were several times when I had situations where a student was in crisis. And having to work with that student in a crisis. Those those to me are the most important moments. Because you have to you have to adjust to what the student's saying to you. You have to make sure you get him or her the the correct amount of help. You have to work with parents in those crisis situations. You know, whether it's a student who's self-injured, or a student who is depressed, or a student who has had some kind of crisis happening outside of the home. So I I mean, as a middle school principal, I dealt with those situations all the time. And, you know, we also had several several moments where we had to lock down the building. Or I had to keep, I had to bring the temperature down. Because I think as a leader, that's what you're often doing, is you're bringing the temperature down. You're making sure everyone understands that we're safe. You lean on things like protocols, and you lean on relationships. So, you know, not to get explicitly specific about things, but I can think of many, many instances where I had to act on just being a good person. You know, and just just making sure that I related to someone when they were, when their whole world had fallen apart. Or relating to a parent, you know, who who just, you know, whether it was sometimes it, you know, I did my my dissertation on bullying. Sometimes it had to do with a bullying incident. And it was both a student, a student who was bullied, or a student who was bullying. And having to work with those kids and and the families of those students. And realizing that there are so many dimensions that are happening. There's so, this is a very complex problem. And to not be judgmental or put on blinders. So that was, that's something that I I became better at as I as I went through it. But it it always requires you to to step outside for a second and just just think about, you know, someone as a person. I had a student who I still see all the time. I'm not, I can't tell you what he, well, he he, I still see him all the time in my my town. But I had him as a student. And I remember him as a student was was in trouble quite a bit. And said to me one day, you know, when I had a private moment with him, he said, Mr. Sullivan, I'm just so stupid. You know, I can't, he just, he really felt depressed about that. But and he he told me recently the way I reacted to him in that scenario, which was to tell him he wasn't. And to tell him that I believed in him. And to step outside of the fact that he had done something wrong in that instance, to realize that those words were more important to him. I think that's the type of thing that, you know, you, as a as a leader, you're always banking on those those skills of being just a good person.
Tell us about your experiences working with educators who resist your recommendations, including veteran educators who are skeptical about your plans.
So I've had, I've had that in my career.
I think we all have.
Yeah, I've had plenty of times when. So you need to stay true to your vision. But one of the things that I I I try to do is I try to move in a direction, be very transparent and explicit with my with my vision is, grounded in data, have open conversations with people, and never stop talking to them. Because I know there's a, you know, there's a school of thought out there that, you know, you you kind of lean on those people who are, I mean, you have people in every every faculty who run with ideas and they take off with ideas. You get people who will be pulled by them, and then you get some who who settle in a little bit more. And maybe you've had some success with other methodologies. But there's a school of thought to, don't worry about them, worry about the others. I don't really believe in that. I I believe in keeping an open dialogue with everyone, learning from everybody, trying to get get something. You know, a lot of it has to do with, are they really in it for the kids? If someone's really in it for the kids, I view them as they can add to this dialogue. When they're not showing me those things, it's a totally different situation. And those are the situations where I think anybody in education would agree, those people should move to a different occupation. So so you 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 move them in that way. But, you know, always trying to be open and always trying to keep listening as I move to a direction. Never put on blinders.
Um, I think that I'll go over my time if I ask another question, so I'll move on to Mrs. Sullivan.
You can come back.
Redirect.
Redirect.
Okay, I am going to start with a question about standards and accountability. So there's been a push pretty much nationwide over the last couple of decades for accountability and a move towards standards-based reporting, the need, the move towards standards-based reporting, that those have increased. And and they've increased the time pressures and work stress for teachers. How would you balance this drive for accountability with the desire to give our best teachers the freedom to teach? And how could you alleviate the pressures on teachers generally in that regard?
Well, you get me, to start with the last part of that.
Yeah.
You know, to to support them, to take chances, to tap into that that passion. So no teacher should feel like he or she is teaching to a test. That that's not a good place to teach from. You know, no one went, no one went into the business to think that they'd be at a particular page at a particular day. They went in, they went into it to teach a a subject and to teach kids in general the power of of knowledge going forward. So, you know, I I would try to stress really authentic learning happening in the classroom. With authentic audience, really creative and innovative educational practices. Whether it be, you know, project-based learning, design thinking. There's a lot of things that teachers can feel proud about if they're actually concentrating on good teaching and good learning and getting the right feedback, and not a particular test and the standard. Having said that, you know, the balance is that we have some things to learn from some of those standardized tests. You know, that is a data point. And if it's surrounded by other data points, it can help us create more important, authentic assessments. And I hope the assessments catch up to where we want teaching to go. Because, you know, we 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 don't want to teach to a standardized test. We want to be able to teach those twenty-first century skills, which is funny you call them twenty-first century skills now. Two thousand nineteen, but those skills of creativity, of collaboration, of critical thinking, of problem solving. So inspiring teachers to do that. And, you know, that that that's more important to me a- as a as a district leader than the other stuff.
Okay. And then I'm gonna ask you a question about special education.
Yeah.
Partly, there's a lot of regulations tied to special education. It can be very complex. It's a significant portion of our operating budget. And I just would like to hear a little bit about your experience tied to special education. And that's the first part of the question. The other one is that we have in Cohasset made some pushes for inclusion and more of a push-in model and co-teaching model in the last several years, which has been well-regarded. My question is, how do you make sure that and support teachers and administrators so they really understand what that should look like? And that to make sure that inclusion is really working for special education students?
So I love I love the co-teaching idea. And we've been, we've been doing that in, you know, seventh, sixth grade and eighth grade, ninth grade, so we're moving it up. It it's a powerful construct, if done properly, the the collaboration that happens between teachers.
Yeah.
I'm a big proponent of inclusion. And I think in a district like we have, trying to be as flexible as we can with special education and the the programs that we offer students, you know, in any special education model, sometimes there are those students that tend to fall between the cracks of programming. And I think we have to be able to to support those 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 students who who fall in those categories. I know Mary Buchanan and the team do a great job of of tracking students after, if they go out placed too, to be able to make sure that when it's time for them to come back, that we're we're ready to take them back. But I, you know, I feel like, also, you know, good teaching in general, whether it be executive functioning, whatever it might be that a student who has a special need is, might be, have as an obstacle. Good teaching in general helps the sped students, oh, I should, special education students and all all students. So the idea is to make sure that our tiered system of supports is strong, and that it starts with good tier one. You know, you have, if you have a good tier one, which is that generalized teaching in the in the in the classroom, then a lot of the other problems are gonna are gonna alleviate. I I'm I'm a big fan of continuing to push UDL, Universal Design for Learning, within our our district. Because that automatically has teachers considering their lessons and considering their assessments in ways that remove obstacles for every student. So I know it's kind of a roundabout answer, but that that's, th- those are many of my views on inclusion and special education and how we could help out all students.
Um, let's see. Next question is about how how you have, how have you supervised an administrator or teacher who is having trouble managing a school, a program, or a classroom? And what was the outcome of your efforts? And have there been cases where you've had to dismiss an administrator or teacher at a time when you believed this was necessary when performance didn't meet your expectations?
Mm-hmm. I have not had the experience of having to dismiss an administrator. I haven't had that experience. I I've had the experience of dismissing a teacher. And in many ways, I I go back to what I said about the teacher who who really is in it for the reasons of helping us. And you can see data that they're really trying, and they're just not ma- making the mark. Those teachers you tend to work harder with, to try to get them to to succeed. But, you know, the those teachers who who weren't in it for the right reasons and they made, they were, every effort was plain that they weren't, you know, to to make sure that you you move them, move them to the to the side. But I think every person you hope, and it's from my experience, the most people that go into education go into it with some fire, with some passion. And as a leader, you're always trying to make sure that that fire keeps kindled and it keeps. So you want to try everything to support a teacher and a leader. Make sure that if you do get to the point where you you need to move on, it's not a match, or it just doesn't match what we're doing here. And we are very, we should have very high standards here in Cohasset. You do want to be able to say that you've tried everything to support that individual. But I I certainly have had had that experience with teachers. I haven't had it yet with an administrator. Hope I never have it with an administrator. Might, at some point, hopefully never. Thank you.
Am I at my time?
If you wouldn't ask another question.
I can't.
Yeah, I can't see the letter.
Yeah, yeah, you can ask without one.
Okay, I'll just, this is just simple. I I um, I often enjoy talking, I drop in fairly frequently and talk curricularly with you.
That's great. I love that talks.
Yes, I I enjoy it too. And I do find you to be a good listener and very reflective also, and it makes me reflect. But at any rate, and you've mentioned some of the inspiration that you pulled from one of the books you mentioned in the beginning. I wrote it down. I can't find it. But who who would you, can you tell us a little bit about your mentors or role models? And what did you learn from them that you apply to your own work?
Yeah, so my my biggest mentor is my mother. And it's absolutely no question. I'm very fortunate because the the women in my life have been amazing, my my mother and my wife. And my wife is absolutely inspiring all the time. I have four kids, just, this is a little personal thing, but I have I have four kids under under nine. And, you know, the way that I, just to see her and everything that she does and that we try to do together, she's very inspiring to me. My mother obviously raised me as a single parent. I don't, I think I told you that I had some loss when I was younger. Her persistence, her positivity, her kindness have been very inspiring to me. And I've always tried to, I've always tried to emulate that. So those are really, right now, my two biggest role models. I've had other leaders, a former superintendent I had, Dr. Borstel, who's actually done some work here in the district.
Uh-huh.
Who's extremely influential to me. And someone that, at my best, I would aspire to be like, very systematic, very kind, always let you know how he feel, he felt or feels. But but always get the best out of you. And I always felt like when he met with me in in a one-on-one meeting, that he was pushing me to be better and that he was challenging me. And I learned as an administrator to really be motivated by being challenged by another individual to think. And sometimes I'd go home and I'd be kind of mad, like, jeez, I thought that was going well. And then I'd come back and 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 he'd say, it was going well, but I think you could do more with that. So great, great mentor for me. People who, people who have challenged me and have made me, you know, in sports, I had a great, a great coach. His name's Coach Miller. He's actually a Hall of Fame, I was lucky to have a Hall of Fame coach in as a as a coach for me. But I would have run through the proverbial wall for him, almost did a few times. Because he was just, he did the same way. He was inspiring. He he got me. I felt like he was one of the first male role models that actually saw me as someone who had a lot of potential. And he put that time and kindness into me and had very high expectations for me. You know, I remember at a state game, missing a foul shot, and I thought he was gonna have a heart attack. Because we had taken a hundred foul shots, you know, hundreds of foul shots to get ready for that moment. So those are inspiring figures for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, by the way, for all you've done for the district.
Thank you very much.
I would just say, my question is, it would be, how do you improve communications and inspire families to get involved? Especially the ones that feel like they haven't been heard here in the district.
I think that's a, that's a part of our district that can improve. And it's actually part of my core being is to be communicative and to work with families. Constant communication, you know, just just constant communication in in a way that is, that everyone, and what I mean by that is, communication has many many inroads. I mean, there's social media communication. There's, not everybody loves blackboards, but getting that out there. There's a certain point where you you need to, there's a line you need to hit with communication. If you don't hit it, you you know it. If you don't hit it, you, you know it because the community feels disconnected. Also inviting them in to talk, you know, one of the things that I really love to do is to get the dialogue in the district more personal to us. So talking to administrators, administrators talking to them.
Face to face.
Face to face, I think that's really important. You know, we're in a culture where I think a lot of talk happens on social media. And social media is here to stay, you gotta use it as a tool. But I would encourage people to just, to just come and talk to us.
Pick up the phone too, right?
Yeah.
And these texts can be misdirected in so many different ways. And that's what we do with our staff, if you have, if you have confrontation, always pick up the phone. It's so much better than back and forth, back and forth.
I, I agree, and I, I, I just, I hope to, to be as transparent as possible with everything that happens.
So do you have like an open door policy, or do you keep your door open? Are you an appointment type of guy, or you, well, come on in, let's just pull up your sleeves?
This is a small district, and it, like, I go back to that feeling that it should, it should feel like a family. And I think people should feel comfortable to come and talk to me at any, at any time. So, yeah, I'd probably make appointments.
Yeah.
But it's, but it, but it isn't, but it's a, but it's a very open invitation and a, almost a plea to make that kind of communication happen here in Cohasset. Because I think once we start understanding each other better, then everything will start improving. And I think it'll make a, a, a good district even better in many regards. And some of those families that you mentioned that needs to have some healing around or we need, we need better communication between us, that'll happen if it's more direct and transparent.
Transparent, good work. The other thing is, how do we improve the facilities? And what is your experience in, in your previous work about buildings themselves? Such as roofs in, in the facility itself?
Yeah.
Such as Marsh, Marshfield, as you know.
Yeah.
I mean, we're no Marshfield in the comes to buildings. What would you do to help?
Marshfield was no Marshfield at one point.
Yeah, and did you help with the building?
Well, our building, so I did, I helped, I helped. I, I was a part of a leadership team when we built our new high school back when I was in Marshfield. And, you know, I still live in Marshfield though.
Yeah, yeah.
But that, that was an interesting experience. The build, the, the high school at that time was literally falling down. I mean, there were walls falling in and it was a very, much different situation than we have here. But I saw the process for it with the Massachusetts Metal Building Association. I also was, as I was leaving my role as middle school principal, we were going through, we went through a feasibility study. We went into, we were really getting ready to, they were roping things off when I was leaving for a new roof that just went up. It was this, it was like an eight million dollar project that ended up being about seven million to put it in. So it was, so I'm very familiar with that. I'm also very familiar with working with, I know, business managers, I've had a couple of really good ones, including Melina Wright.
Right, yeah, no, no, that's, that's good.
Who, who, you know, you collaborate with to, to talk about what's important. And, yeah, so I've had some experience. And, you know, I'm, I'm very collaborative in that sense. So I think as we move to improve the facilities, I'm, I'm able to do it.
Two quick things, yeah. Do you see yourself as a progressive when it comes to start times and blizzard bags and et ceteras? And such as being a leader in the school committee, school superintendents, seminars?
Yeah.
Do you see yourself as an active role in being a leader there and having some mentors without the superintendent?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm always trying to learn from superintendents who have, or anybody in education. Everything has an experiential component to it. To learn from people, whether they be a teacher leader, some of the best leaders I've ever seen are teachers. They just stayed in the teaching profession and that's, it's great they did that. I consider myself still a teacher, just to make that clear. But, yes, always keeping, you know, always keeping it open mind, always being progressive, very open to listen to all of that and to moving forward, absolutely, absolutely.
There's only one question, I got this from the Cub Scouts, my Cub Scout kids, they wanted to know if you can improve the food.
Improve the food? I like, I like the food, I would say, but, but, you know, I believe at, at my core, I believe in healthy food. And in, for kids spec particularly, and I don't know if you eat healthy food, I have to say that honestly. But health, but healthy food for kids in the schools.
No, healthy food is great.
Healthy and tasty, right?
Yeah.
So, but I'm very inspired to, to work to improve, improve any of that.
Okay.
And certainly open.
Okay.
Okay, all right, do you have any questions for us?
Um, no, you know, I, I don't at this time because I, I feel very connected to the work we've been doing. And I just, just in closing, just to tell you how inspired I am for the potential of, of being a superintendent here in, in Cohasset. I really learned a lot in my time here. And I'm excited to provide what I can for the community and I think it's a great match, so, thank you for that.
Well, thank you. So just for the audience, I just wanted to recap how we got to where we are. So indulge me if you're familiar with this, but when Superintendent Dean was retired, announced her retirement at the end of January, beginning of February, we knew we had to get moving right away. And we set up meetings with four search firms, February sixth and February seventh, to come in and give us proposals of how they would go about a superintendent search. All of them had their own twist, their own bent. All of them said, though, if you had a strong internal candidate, vet that candidate first. Don't go through the process of an external search when you have someone who you think potentially is a very strong candidate. One, it'll drag the process out, it'll cost you time and money, and you might not get all the applicants that you want from the outside if you have someone strong on the inside. So when it was four out of four, we said, okay, let's go with that. We selected the Collins Center from UMass to assist us. They're here with us, Mr. Ed Gutcard and Ray Shertliff have been very helpful in helping us through this process. They came, we, we gave them the challenge to come up with an internal search process. And if it didn't work out, how would we then segue seamlessly into an external search? And they did that where we, if we didn't have a strong candidate on the inside, we would still hit our marks the next external search and then announcement late May, beginning of June. So we set up focus groups, of which many community members, faculty and staff and students participated. And students had the highest, there were twenty-nine students participated. We had secondary, secondary staff focus group, we had an elementary staff focus group, and we had two parent sessions. And from those focus groups and those questions, the leadership profile was developed. And the leadership profile really is, what do people want, what are the characteristics in a superintendent? So forgive me while I just touch on these, but I think it's really important that everybody understands the leadership profile. It came out of focus groups, which is, which shaped where we are today. Leadership for the district that has unquestionable integrity and honesty as the foundation for work. Strong verbal and written communications with attention to content, ensuring all communications are well-written, timely, informative, and accurate. A vision of education in Cohasset that takes advantage of a skilled teaching faculty, motivated students and parents who will be excellent partners in the education of their children. A collaborator who understands and appreciates the value of working together and listens to relevant stakeholders before acting. A leader committed to engaging families in the broader community in the effort to make the Cohasset schools the best that they can be. A strategic planner who can engage the school community in how best to use the resources available in the community to advance teaching and learning through innovation and creativity. A central office that embraces transparency and facilitates access for all stakeholders. And leadership that places students at the center of all decisions, especially those that may impact their health and safety. So that was the leadership profile. From there, we went on to forums where we had one, we posted the job internally. We had one applicant, Dr. Patrick Sullivan. And then he spent Monday talking with staff from the elementary, staff from the secondary, and parents. And the interactions from the forums then shaped where we are on our questions and answered for us as a committee, does our candidate hit the criteria of the leadership profile or not? And I think I can say, we felt very positive when we went through the forum worksheets last night, that the positive responses were very reflective of the profile that, that's here.
Sounds good to hear.
So, so that, so that's, that's good to hear, 'cause otherwise we wouldn't be having the con, this conversation. So, so, and that's where we are. And now here we are with, you know, we just concluded a great interview, you have no questions for us. And now we're going to deliberate?
Should I leave or do you just say?
No.
Yeah, yes, our, our consultants are telling us to step out.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry. I'll be proud.
So. So we, we didn't really strategize on how we're gonna deliberate, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
But I'll, I'll just, if, if the committee doesn't mind, can I, can I just, just start?
No, to three, by all means.
So in going through all the forum questionnaires, and I don't, I don't recall the exact number, there were probably, I think there were seventeen elementary, I think there were twelve secondary staff member forum responses. And out of the five or six parents that showed up, we got two, got two written responses. So I took all the positives and I took all the negatives. And I'm not Google proficient, so I did it the old-fashioned way. And I just, sorry, I need another refresher. And, and I just, then I alphabetized them and I saw how many times did the same comments keep coming up. And, you know, approachable, approachable, approachable. Believes in culture, believes in culture, believes in relationships, believes in staff, believes in routines. Collaborative, collaborative, communicative, 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 transparent, transparent, communication skills. Honest integrity, energy, energy, energy. So a lot of the same comments kept coming up in these independently handwritten forum sheets that hit honest integrity, communication, vision, collaborator, engage families, community, community, strategic planner, transparency, student centered. Honest, 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 knows the district, knows the district, knows the district, knows the staff. Passionate, 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 positive, 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 proactive. So I, I personally feel very positive about our candidate. And that's my comments.
Um, I guess I'm next. So this is the second time I've been in a position to deliberate over Patrick for hiring in this town. I was on the search committee for the assistant superintendent position. And so got to see him do that interview and, so obviously this is the second interview. And I do still remember when his packet came in for assistant superintendent. We had quite a few, and I remember I wrote across the top of his, I can't wait to meet this guy. Because of the recommendations that were written on his behalf, and some of the same people wrote for him again. But you can tell the difference in a really passionate, sincere, when you know you kinda have the real deal candidate versus someone who's qualified and has some nice attributes. And I have some benefit of that I am a very drop-in to the central office of I have to do something. And hey, Patrick, I think you're right on this. Because I, I care very much about our students and what they're learning in their academic environment, and their well-being. And he's, like I said before, he, he's very reflective, he, I think he is an excellent listener. I always leave thinking they'll have resources, I'm always checking out his books on his shelf. And then the other thing that I've seen about, he's done a wonderful job with professional development. I do have a number of friends that are teachers, I'm sure not, everybody has their own opinions, but I'm not in this to hire the person I wanna hire, I really like to hear what the community has to say. That's, we're representative. And I've heard so much feedback and I've gotten to see Patrick in a number of roles that are not his job, actually, this year. He's stepped in, he doesn't say that's not in my job description. He's been competent in everything he's been asked to do. And when I did teach middle school, in the front of my room, I had a number of quotes, but my essential quote was, the way you do anything is the way you do everything. And I do think about, I think Patrick was an excellent teacher. I think he was a very strong department chair, I think he's been a very strong assistant superintendent. Do I think he is gonna be absolute perfection the day he potentially steps into the position? No, I think that's unrealistic and unfair to expect of anybody in any position, I don't care what it is. And in superintendents, like somebody said, there's a, there's a short tolerance in our culture, I think, for making errors. And I think if allowed a learning curve, I, I think, I think Patrick's a rising star in, in this area. I, I think he's got incredible pedigree in a lot of areas. So like I said, do I think it's gonna be a, he's gonna know everything day one? No, but I think, I think we'd be foolish not, not to.
Pass up on this opportunity.
To pass up on the opportunity.
So, can I make another comment about that? The other thing that came out is that he knows the district. And if he, if he is to get the job, as everyone knows, we have a couple of big positions to fill. And knowing the district so intimately, I, I feel confident he could make the right match. He would have to replace himself as assistant superintendent, we have middle school principal, we have high school principal. And someone coming in might not, well, definitely wouldn't know the district and, and our culture the way that he does. And it's also an opportunity, a rare opportunity, when you think about it, for superintendent to really be able to build his own team and be vested in that team and be in it for the long haul. And that was another thing that came out is the turnover that we've had has been challenging for staff, for community members. And he's a young, ambitious guy. And he, I, I think he'd be in it, you know, in this district for a long time.
I think that the turnover feedback has been a little disheartening. And in seeing this particular candidate and knowing his strengths, I agree with Ellen that this is a unique opportunity for him to build a team that, of people that he can work very closely with and they can develop together. And I think that's very important when you're running a school district. I've been hearing about Patrick since the day we first heard that he was going to interview here because my boss lives in Marshfield and was very disheartened that he was going to be leaving that district. And as late as today, I mean, we've, we have a very cohesive packet of information with lots of people saying great things about him. But just today, I got an unsolicited email from somebody else in Marshfield, who I've known for over twenty years. And he had nothing but good things to say. I was actually surprised that it wasn't in the packet that we got.
The superintendent, the superintendent in Marshfield.
The superintendent in Marshfield I've known since our kids played together when they were little. So he sent a very nice email today and, which I responded to in kind because I really appreciated his feedback. And I've known him as an individual and as a superintendent. I know his background as a superintendent in other areas and what they thought of him. So for him to support Patrick in this endeavor, I think is, it's, it speaks volumes. So I am very positive about this. I, I think that it's, it gives us a great opportunity for growth. And it shouldn't be looked at as disappointing that we're having turnover and change. I think it's an opportunity. Change gives us opportunities. That's it, for me.
Um, I sat last night and, and, well, we all sat last night. And we all looked through what the people were saying in the forums and in the focus groups. And, and this is, these are the sheets from the forums. And to go through them and see so many positive comments about Patrick, it's just, it's unbelievable. I can't imagine a better person. And I agree with Barbara, that being a superintendent is a very hard job. And. And you need someone in that role that has a very strong educational philosophy, because they're going to be having to make decisions, sometimes they'll be in a situation where they have to make decisions quickly and without the opportunity to build consensus, and I think his instincts are good because his instincts are based in, to me, the fundamental, most important attribute of anybody in education is kindness, and I heard that tonight, and I was very moved by his, um, his answer, especially to Jean's question about, um, being able to respond to people in crisis. So.
Yeah, I'd like to, um, point out too, the empathy part, I think that's huge, is, I think all of us need to be a little bit more empathetic and know what each person's going through, if, even when somebody flips you off in the car and you're driving a, you know, you're like, that guy's having a bad day, and, and you know, and, and if anybody ever wrote this nice stuff about me, my staff, I don't think I'd get these words. And, uh, and, and there's over forty, I mean, if you wanna talk about really good leaders, uh, leadership, and, uh, the positive response, and I think to, to even, to the former superintendent, the idea that we've been able to keep our staff, uh, in place, uh, has been great. Um, as you pointed out, the unemployment is down, uh, we save money because people are happy, but he also has a lot of challenges, and, uh, I think it's more important that we as a community and as a school committee keep the new superintendent accountable, and know when we have something, we're gonna be accountable and he's gonna have to answer to the people, and I think that, that is, that is a big thing, and I think, uh, I think he's up for the challenge, I think we're, we're, uh, you know, I wanna say that I'm in support, and, and however, we're gonna keep him accountable, Brian and.
Do our consultants have anything to add, or no? Is that inappropriate?
Uh, I don't know about inappropriate, but I think you've said it all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I think you've, you've seen, you've seen this candidate, you've seen this, genuinely seen this candidate, as the community has, because he's so open, and, um, he is who he is, and I, I happen to agree with the fact that you match the qualities and the profile of this candidate.
Thank you. Okay, so are we ready to make a motion to move forward with Dr. Sullivan as our superintendent? Okay, so could I have a motion to appoint Dr. Patrick Sullivan as the next superintendent of the Cohasset Public Schools pending successful contract negotiations?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I think you're ahead by a second.
All in favor, could I have a roll call, please?
Hi, Paul Kearney.
Hi, Barbara Stefan.
Hi, Jean Estino.
Hi, Ellen Mark.
Hi, June Mavick.
Let's go get 'em.
All right. I, I just wanna thank, uh, you guys two for, for, uh.
It's my pleasure.
Yeah, thank you.
I know. I can fake this.
Not yet, right?
They got a little effort right up there.
He's running here, don't worry.
No, you have to do that with Gatorade.
I'd say that's the longest walk I've had, I don't know.
It was unanimous.
Should I sit over here? Thank you very much.
No, you, you need to wait.
Thank you. Thank you very much, thank you, much appreciated, and thank you to the committee again, um, very touched, and, uh, thank you to the community, school community leaders, and to the, uh, to the conference group too for their great work, so, we, uh, we appreciate it, and thank you, um, Super Ten Demuses is not here, but he was so helpful in hiring me in the first place. Very touched, and I'm honored, and I, I won't let you down, because I, I, my heart's all in it, and, um, you, we'll, we'll work together and make sure you get this best, uh, educational plan. Thank you.
Was Louise still here?
Is Louise in the office?
Yes.
I, I, yeah, I was assured she knew to come in.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Barb. No, she said she would wait and we.
Thank you very much.
You can take it right now, that works.
Excited, thank you. I should thank you guys too.
Thank you so much.
Really, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just a little. Much appreciated.
Bye, thank you.
We're only fifteen minutes behind, that's not bad.
That's not bad.
Well, we're good.
That was great, that's good.
Yeah, the timing is awesome.
We have so many more questions for you.
Yeah, we do.
So, I know, actually.
Call home and put it on speaker.
I texted it, I, I got my, my phone to go beep, beep. She was definitely asking questions.
That's funny.
That's great.
That's great. And we'll, and we'll all be in tomorrow with the rest of our questions. No, really.
I welcome them, I guess we want, the day off of it.
Well, we never hesitate to, to ask questions, as you know, we're all in and out all the time, so.
Yeah, no, I, I, I appreciate, um, everything we did, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, honestly, Patrick, if you didn't hit the leadership profile, this wouldn't happen, so, no, no, I'm, I'm serious, because that, that's why you do the focus groups, you need, you need to move you over.
Barbara, thank you, thank you very much, so thank you, thank you very much.
All right.
So.
Thank you to Super Ten.
Louise, it's not going to be that easy. Good try though.
Good try. Good choice, very good choice.
Thank you.
Thanks for hiring, thank you.
Call home.
Yeah, right.
That's all right.
I know, I know. You should be allowed to step out and call home if you'd like, I think that's there.
Go with.
Right.
I know, I want you to put it on speaker.
It's the first televised text, it was a good text. I just said the direct communication is better and now I'm texting.
That's funny.
I'd, I'd say that's appropriate.
That is.
Right.
That is awesome.
Okay, so we're gonna move on with the rest of the agenda, which, um, reports from subcommittees and liaisons, uh, does anybody have anything to report?
Subcommittees and liaisons, um, CPAC has a lot of events coming up, uh, so check your Fed Connect, 'cause I don't have the dates in front of me, but a lot of, uh, coming up in May, I believe.
Okay.
We have an exciting basketball game that I'm gonna be playing, and, oh, it's good, Deer Hill Showdown, um, I was able to, uh, get a professional, uh, sports announcer to do a play-by-play from W A T D, don't even lose time with it, um, really, that is such a good event, it, it's such good for morale and teachers, to have sixteen hundred, it's just, you'll never play in front of that many people, I mean, I play pickup basketball, maybe there'll be one fan ever, and to, to get a whole town screaming in there, it's just, it's crazy, and, uh, that's on the twenty-ninth of March, it's a Friday night, it's a, it's a great fundraiser, it's done every two years, and I, and it's, it's, I, it, it's a collaborative of, of good people getting together and, uh, and it's, you see some of the, and, and Mar, thank you, because some of the stuff that you guys come out with this year, especially with the, uh, I don't know if you guys have seen this on social media, I have the pictures of the teachers and all the stats, and, it's just, it's, just makes it exciting to live here in Cohasset, and this, it's what makes us unique.
Yeah.
Funny, yeah.
It is.
Teachers have been practicing.
And Mar, I just wanna point out, Mar, you, you do so much for the community, and, and thank you, and, and that's, we're, we're so lucky to have a P S O, and, and you guys are great, that's why.
They really have.
Oh, that's funny, serious.
Sorry, can I go back to my, um, my, uh, my CPAC stuff, Wednesday, April third, ten to twelve, community room is a, um, CPAC's tried to kind of organize things more by grades focus, so, um, in the community room it's catered to social thinking, uh, um, presentation, I love social thinking, it's awesome, and Sophie of the Little Guys, it's good, um, uh, let's see, there's gonna be a parent coffee at Amanda Zani's home, um, she's the vice president of CPAC, I was a huge, huge, huge fan of the parent coffee, they didn't do them for a while, and I found it was a really great place to really connect with other parents and get resources, um, that it's just, I don't know, I just feel like it tends not to come out as much if you're in this room or something like that, so they're gonna try one of those again, so I hope people go. Um, and then Tuesday, May seventh is the CPAC general meeting, so, um, that's that, and they'll be sending out flyers and email messages soon.
It's at May seventh for coffee, or is that, is that a, uh, during the?
Yeah, I think that one is during the day, um, it is, may fifth, May seventh, nine thirty to eleven.
What time?
And the general meeting's me set right afterwards, so eleven thirty to twelve thirty.
So, okay, I think that's it.
Is anybody else having?
Um, yeah, well, s- uh, there's middle high school school council next Tuesday afternoon, um, I have a security subcommittee meeting tomorrow morning with S R O Taylor and, um, detective sar- is it detective sergeant or sergeant detective, I don't know.
Detective, detective, detective sergeant.
Detective Sergeant Lokes, um, for an update on where we are on the, uh, update to the assessment, um, that'll be an executive session in the morning, um, and then, um, Michael, we'll have to get together, well, soon to start talking about forecasting for the end of the year, budget and finance, we'll have to get on that calendar, um, and we have two outstanding items left with capital budgets, the middle high school boiler replacement, um, I think they wanted to talk about it, but Brian Joy said there was no, no more information on that.
No new updates.
No new updates from Monday, I think.
So, so, my understanding is that they have identified a fix to the boiler f- at the moment to increase the temperature of the water, so that can fix the immediate problem, and they are looking to, uh, green communities grant to replace it, because the boiler, despite the, we haven't been able to start to make this fix, is still well past its useful life, and so it's due to be replaced, and they are looking to replace it through green communities grant, and, and they're not quite replacing life, like they're replacing with this, I mean, I don't, I mean, technically
Yeah.
they have a slightly smaller, more efficient one, because the current one you're on is something eighty-five percent efficiency, which compared to what we get in our water, so, um, so that's going through green communities, and, um.
Okay, and are they proceeding with putting the meter on to get, to reengage the usage?
They are putting a meter on, so you can see.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, um, and then the secu- the, the last phase, the security cameras, um, we've given them everything we know, so they just have to.
Cameras, yeah. Yeah.
It's just a vote.
It's just a vote at that point.
Yeah.
Um, regarding budget and finance too, I ran into Paul Keers the other night, and he had mentioned some of the, it's like the revolving accounts, there's some old revolving accounts that are stuck with, that we have to, they're kind of stuck with the town or something, or we have to go through the town process.
Yeah.
For monies that were.
There, there's a town process, yeah, so, uh, on the, on the tax bills in the old days, you could check off and make a donation to, um, something to elder affairs,
Uh-huh.
Oh, that's what.
Yes. and one was to the schools, and there were two different, um, two different revolving accounts in the town for schools, one was for scholarship, Mm-hmm. and I apologize, I forget what the other one is, and they've just been sitting there, and dormant, and, um, it was actually Katie who had found them,
Yeah.
and, yeah, Paul Keers from Elder Affairs, right?
Yes, yeah.
So, so they have, we have like eight thousand dollars there, and we just have to go through a process to.
Yeah. Yeah. Clearly scholarships are really difficult, because obviously some of them need to have money, but then they're in specific contention.
Well, it's people just check off on their tax bill for scholarship.
Right. It had no intention of doing school.
Oh, right, that's just that, right.
Right.
Right, so, um.
But they have to go through a process in order to, to reassess those funds, uh.
To, to, to get the money out, yeah, so I.
I can't, was there a deadline or anything to it, or we just need to get it done and get it cleaned up?
No, no, we just, no, 'cause it's revolving, so it just, it just carries, it just carries over, and it's there, and I had actually thought a couple of years ago.
Right, just goes on, okay. I didn't know if there was a change in some kind of regulation that, okay.
I don't think so, I don't, I don't think so.
Right.
I have to look back at my notes, we had one meeting, uh, it was last spring, with Chris and Dawn about how to do that, and now I.
Yeah, I, I have my notes, I just didn't write it tonight, um.
Well, we chose to know, I mean, I told them.
Okay, the, um, yeah, but, I mean, we kinda need, we have a school committee scholarship.
It would be.
That'd be nice.
Mm-mm, you know.
I mean, we give the Nichols Award, but it, it's really, it's Nichols, literally, it would be nice to have a school committee scholarship. I, I'd have to go back to the notes and see what, how we probably got it, I think it was scholarship.
Yeah, we s- yeah, one of, one of the funds for at, at, uh, for, for schools is scholarship, and I forget what the other one is, might be teacher education
You don't think what?
T D L, okay.
But, um, so, we should get a budget and finance subcommittee meeting on the docket, either the end of next week, or the beginning of the week after.
Mm-hmm. And we needed to address potential stabilization, um, withdrawals as well, and is there a deadline on that?
Yeah.
No.
Well, just the end of the financial year, so you have to.
Yeah, okay, so that's not super pressing.
We, but, I mean, I think so, the, me and Buchanan and I have been discussing it, and where we are, 'cause we're getting, I mean, at this point in the year, we're getting a fairly firm picture, when we're going to end up with, uh, just, like, a bit of surprises at this stage in the year, and so, hey, we do look like we need to be over budget on the account lines, which are being identified in the specifications, so.
In the bright policy, right.
So we are, so we are definitely over budget on these lines.
So, so we should just look at that and figure that out.
So when, yeah, when do you think you, you'd have like a, a whole forecast?
Soonish.
So we are, we are, the forecast is, we're, for, I haven't really, I think we have, we've been forecasting thousands of dollars for by J F M O's account lines. I don't know, yeah.
For, for sped, yeah, okay, so maybe, yeah, maybe a week from, a week from Tuesday?
Okay, well, we should, we can talk about that basically.
Yes.
I think, I think that, I think I'm pretty clear now, on, on what my other job.
Okay, all right, I'll send out.
Okay, okay.
I'll send out a note to them.
Do you want to have a first schedule, a week from Tuesday?
Um, or email her, I'll email it down from.
We also have a, uh, the Rex have an open house at Deer Hill this weekend.
To help you while there.
Yeah, the.
Has this one, uh, just.
Yeah.
Uh, next.
And you can get your, um, all facilities sticker on Sunday there, as they expire on March thirty-first.
Oh. Yeah, that's another one.
I'll go.
Good to know, okay, any other reports, no, okay, so next is approval of minutes.
There's adjustments to the ones that, um, so I just made adjustments, um, you're supposed to include in attendance and absent, I was actually reading up on secretarial roles recently, um, and you should be including that, so, um, that's updated, and I moved, uh, also in attendance on, should be right under, I think, so.
Okay, all right.
So. Um, so those are adjusted, and then otherwise I'll note your comments.
Okay, so the ones after February sixth, Paul, you should abstain because you weren't present at any of those meetings, so when we get to them to approve them, um, you, you should just not move, okay?
So, yeah, uh, should we start with the person?
Yep, so Wednesday, December nineteenth, minutes, does anybody have any comments?
Um, yes, so, um, I believe we should, um, put, put in, like, we called to order, and I can, I can email this to Tracy and Barb, but we called to order at six oh six with a roll call, um, and then we had the motion to enter executive session, so I think that needs to be.
Right. Right, so we'll have been there.
To be in there, so, I, I'll email that to Tracy. To be in there, so, I, I'll email that to Tracy and to, um, and to Barb, um, the warrant, the mo-
Okay. What time was executive session entered, just, do you have it written or no?
Um.
It says, I think, uh, ten.
Oh, oh, it's on there, sorry, sorry.
No, we came, no, we came.
That came out.
It came out of, we had executive session at six, or six thirty that night.
At six.
Okay.
We called to order at six oh six PM, and then there was a motion to enter executive session for number three.
Uh-huh. Yep.
By me, seconded by Jean, um, approval of the warrant.
That's six oh seven, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Approval of the warrant, um, the motion was made by me and seconded by Mr. Carney.
I'm sorry, um, where?
On the approval of the warrant.
Okay. It was motion by, uh, no.
Mrs. Mar, seconded by Mr. Carney.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, yikes.
It's alright.
I don't know that one.
Right. And then I have one more comment on this one, page three, under key review.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
Second line, it says intention to get recommendations from the budget and finance subcommittee.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and I have comments on page two, at the bottom under vehicle maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the buses come with three sixty-degree cameras, are seatbelt ready, and have GPS, I believe, not traction, I hope they have traction.
I was wondering about that, I was like, I don't even know what to suggest there.
And then I had a note to myself to just ask about the delivery date, you're saying my, April?
Like, mid, mid-April.
Okay.
So delivered mid-April, road ready, beginning of May?
Yeah, that's, that will come in, I will, I mean.
Okay.
Okay. So, okay, so can I have a motion to approve the minutes, school committee minutes, of Wednesday, December nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as amended?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye, aye, if you're voting on that one, it's your, if you wanna vote aye.
Okay.
No, Paul's not voting on me.
You're not gonna vote on any minutes?
I can, that's fine, aye.
I mean, okay, I mean, the ones that you're on, you vote, the ones that you're not on, you can't vote, 'cause you weren't there.
Yeah.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine, I appreciate it.
You could abstain, you could vote no.
Right.
There's options, you got options.
I can, please.
Okay, so the next is Wednesday, January ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
So, again, it's the same thing, it's just we open the meeting, and I'll, I'll send it to Tracy, um, and Barb, at six thirty-six PM, and then we enter an executive session immediately, so I'll send in the details on that.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Um, page two, first paragraph, special education, um, the third line, additional requests for, I would say services, not sped.
Or s- returns.
Yeah, uh. Where she stated they've reviewed seven additional requests for sped, of which four were eligible for the program.
Right.
Hmm, I, I guess you could say, yeah, cert- either one, I think, a little more, but.
Okay.
'Cause if, if, if we're.
Well, we could say sped services.
Yes, I'd say sped s-, yeah, I mean, the sped services, because you're, el- if you're eligible for a program, you're, that's special education, not services.
Sped ser- services, yeah.
Yeah, with referrals. Uh, uh, uh. The referrals, until the evaluations.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it's. You couldn't be eligible for.
Should it be, for, for.
So then we would take up for the program, and, and with eligible?
I don't think.
Special referrals?
No, I think you can just say special education services, and for eligible for.
Or are they? Yeah, so pick up the words for the program.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, that's probably more accurate.
Okay. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, it's all I have.
Okay, so could I have a motion to approve the school committee minutes of Wednesday, January ninth, two thousand and nineteen?
As amended.
As amended, sorry.
So, yeah, second.
So. Who's, the whom?
I'm.
Jen, Jen and me.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and, uh.
This is so fun.
Isn't it?
This is the best part.
This is when most people get up and leave, so.
If you wanna leave, this is a nightmare.
I've opted to be here for the, so.
There you go.
And trading.
So next is the.
So good to have someone with poor executive functioning skills being secretary, let me just say.
Doing a great job.
Thank you, Paul.
Seriously.
So next are the school committee minutes for Wednesday, January twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, I do have a few, a couple of things.
Okey-dokey.
Yeah, um, I have, okay, so page two, under finance, monthly update, um, it should be Mr. McMillan's statement, the budget report shows that they've spent forty-two percent this year compared to thirty-eight percent last year, we've been spent forty-two percent more than last year.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Hmm, good one.
This, here. Versus how much, thirty-eight percent?
Thirty-eight percent.
Last year, okay.
Last year, page three, under school committee comments and communications, the last line, it should be the safe schools committee, not the wellness committee.
Okay. Okay. I thought that was odd.
I thought there was another committee, so.
Yeah.
Where was that going?
Um, page three, under school committee comments and communications, the very last line.
Page three.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, replace wellness with safe schools. Um, same page, I'd like to add a line under topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair.
Okay.
Um, the last line should be, they will also schedule two more firms for February seventh at six PM.
Okay.
That's all I have, sorry.
Okay, um, on page two, um, under middle school update, about halfway down.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
It was a discussion that included having a dedicated middle school principal. Would staff and other help?
With what?
I'm thinking that that must be the secretary, would staff and other help for the middle school principal?
I didn't think so, I think we had a discussion about an assistant, now I think we talked about the secretary as well, maybe real, maybe.
What date is this?
Sorry, I was just trying to speak to the assistant.
Uh, January twenty-third.
Just my phone, I don't know, I can't, I don't know how to turn off the, uh.
See, it make me look.
Middle school study, maybe I'll structure.
There was a question about.
No, so it's.
To be a secret, a secretary.
And now it's for.
I do remember it being brought up.
My, my note was exploratory committee with middle school principals separated, and, and it helped nurse and athletics.
Oh, okay, so that was.
Maybe.
Yeah, so we could, we could say a discussion that included having a dedicated middle school principal, period.
Maybe.
I think that's all it is, that was the main topic.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um, but you already did the finance part, um.
Are we leaving that alone then, how it was?
Dedicated middle school principal.
Okay, period, and then.
Period.
Okay.
Um, and then I just have a question, 'cause like I said, when I get to read these again, every time, questions.
Okay. Follow-up, okay.
Um, yeah, the follow-up question about the UMass Lowell program.
So, the, the UMass Lowell program, um.
In a nutshell.
Uh, um, it, it's a, that's a program, a design engineering.
Yes.
Do you wanna know about the program?
No, have we, have we implemented it this year, or is it planned for, for?
No.
We did, so we had this year, we had, I think, three or so students who are part of it, um, and I know we, we have some interest, and people wanting to be part of it, um, next year as well.
That's great.
Yeah, so we have, we have a few students.
Can I please start, January twenty-third?
Yes.
Alright, so let me just see. Okay, does anybody else have comments on this?
No.
Then could I have a motion to approve the school committee minutes of Wednesday, January twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, as amended?
So moved.
Second.
James.
Um.
Okay, so I gave that one to Jen and Paul.
Oh, okay, oh, Jen, aw, man.
Oh, sorry, um, all in favor, aye?
Okay. Aye.
So, Michael, I didn't send the warrant, 'cause my son is on.
I thought you were just a Jake, into general.
No.
On general principal, yeah.
Yeah.
John works in games during break, so he's on his side, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so next is the school committee minutes of Wednesday, February sixth, two thousand and nineteen, any comments? At this point, I was kinda going cross-eyed, so.
So, first page, uh, third line, under superintendent's report, um, angst is on March twenty-sixth, not twenty-eighth.
Okay, good catch.
Actually, it was scheduled for twenty-eighth at that point.
That's correct.
Oh, was it, was it correct? Oh, 'cause my note said the twenty-sixth.
It is the twenty-sixth now, it started on the twenty-eighth, and then it was discussion to move it, and it was moved from the twenty-eighth.
Oh, that's funny.
That's correct.
Oh, no, 'cause in my handwritten notes, 'cause I went back, and I'm like.
If you had it in your handwritten notes, it's fine.
Oh, no, 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 we'll leave it, 'cause Tracy, you have to write that.
That, that's what it was, I get that.
Okay, maybe I was, because we thought of showing it to students.
I was quite.
Talking of that.
I was, I was quite, actually, as it's changed, the students were to see it on the twenty-eighth, and we decided to postpone that entirely.
I was sitting here for a while.
Okay, so.
That was the only thing I had. Okay. So these can be left alone.
Okay, yes, so, um, motion to approve the school committee minutes for Wednesday, February sixth, two thousand and nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, Paul?
But he's at, you're standing, he wasn't there, right?
No, he was there.
Oh, sorry.
No, he wasn't, no, he wasn't.
Oh, no, the February sixth, you're right.
Okay. He's on the list, though.
We had him listed, as absent.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's this next group. So, Thursday, February seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Anyone have any changes? No?
No.
Okay, um, do I motion to approve the school committee minutes for Thursday, February seventh, two thousand and nineteen?
So moved, second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye. Sorry about all the minutes, I just.
That's okay.
Backlogged with my other stuff.
We got it, we got it, it's all good, okay, so school committee minutes for Thursday.
And we have a lot of meetings.
But we did have a lot of meetings, um, school committee minutes for Thursday, February fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Do I motion approve?
So moved, second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And lastly.
Okay, aye, aye.
Okay, Thursday, February twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Anybody?
Anyone, anyone?
Anyone, no, um, some, some of us.
See what you made us do? So, do I have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Okay, do I have a second, okay, all in favor?
Suck it. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's great, so that's all taken care of, thank you, very much.
Now I just have to do the executive, and we're all set. Just give you the whole packet.
Okay, I'm gonna recycle these, 'cause those are for correct.
The minutes.
Paul, Paul, are you not signing a warrant?
No.
Okay.
I have questions, and, and the other question is, don't, should we get that before we sign it, like?
You go, it's in the, you front office.
You have the opportunity to come before the meeting.
Okay.
And it's at the, it's in the business office all week.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I think I emailed you why, what, what I'd like to see.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Before you sign it.
Alright, um. Okay, so, no follow-up and updates for now, um, I don't have any topics not reasonably anticipated, and do we have any reason to go into executive session?
No, actually, but can I just circle back, just for the note, so, um, but Paul, you seconded the motion to approve it, and you voted to approve it, so why wouldn't you sign it?
Nope. Yep.
'Cause there's something there that I wanna see before I sign it, I am, is that okay?
Okay.
Probably shouldn't take any action on it if you're not gonna, if you're gonna abstain from signing it.
Yeah.
So, maybe we should re, re-vote it?
Yes.
We can re-vote it.
Okay, alright, so let's take another vote, please, um, could I have a motion to approve warrant nineteen dash sixteen S? Okay, I'll make the motion to approve warrant nineteen dash sixteen S, do I have a second?
Sorry, I was getting back to my notes. Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
I, Barbara Steffen.
I, Gina Stino.
I, I, I'm, I'm, sorry.
You resigned. Aye.
I'm tired.
And I abstained.
Yes, that's my thing here.
Okay, so it's on the warrant. And we have a quorum, so.
Yes, we do, so it's okay.
You have two, we have three, so it gets approved. So, is it, what's the vote officially then, it's not voting, or is that a three to two, three zero two?
Yep. Three to two. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No, three, three.
Three.
Three, zero.
One, one. Paul, what was your vote, no or abstain?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so it's three, one, one.
Three, one, one, okay, thank you.
Okay. Alright, so do I have a motion to adjourn our meeting at nine forty-six?
So moved.
Second.
Do I have a second, okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you, everybody.
Awesome, glad you did, Jen, if you got.